Can you provide us with the introduction again?
Yes, I will. Yes, hello and welcome. My name is John McNally, and I will assist the mayor and the elected officials with the go-to webinar portion of today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the those virtual audience members know how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise. It will be specific times during this meeting when audience members can participate. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the go-to webinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. The second way is by clicking on the raise hand icon indicating that you wish to speak. A meeting organizer will announce the next speaker at the appropriate time and unmute their audio, at which time they should state their name and address for the record. Please minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your microphone during your allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, John. Call to order of the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting today, Wednesday, September 8, 2021, at 5:30 PM. May I please have a roll call?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay. Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Typhon Serga.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. I believe we have Pastor Dwayne Roberts from Cavalry Chapel to provide us with the invocations, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Vice Mayor Hay. Would everyone please rise?
Yes, this is Pastor Roberts, and I'm so honored to be here. If we can just take some time and bow our heads in prayer. Lord, we ask for your wisdom today. We seek your help in all that we have come to do. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us as we gather for this meeting. Lord, please give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda, reveal those problem areas, and show us the best solutions that will apply. Point our eyes to every positive outcome since our last meeting, and let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in the room. I pray over our mayor, Assistant Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and I pray over the citizens and the community of Boynton Beach. Lord, we ask that we would be united as one for what's best for our great city, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin with the agenda approval, I received a request from our attorney to move up item 2D to in front of 2C or 2B?
In front of B, just after A.
Okay. In addition, would the commission be willing to hear item 12B before consent agenda, which is the last item on the agenda, proposed resolution 21-117? Yes. And is there any other additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
We do have an additional application for the A-hat committee.
You have to speak into the microphone.
We, sorry, we have an additional application we published before we got this in, but an applicant for the A-hat committee to consider during your appointments under administrative.
Okay.
Thank you.
There being no further additions, deletions, or corrections, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? The move. Second. There being no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commission. Vice Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose at this time. A number of phone calls did come my way, but I was unable to return them in time, so I didn't actually speak.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Romulus?
I would echo the sentiments of my John report. I did receive several phone calls, but was not able to speak to anyone. Those were disclosures. Thank you.
Commissioner Pentzger?
Yes, regarding item 12B, I had a conversation with Mr. Michael Weiner, and that is it for disclosures.
All right. Vice Mayor?
No real disclosures, except I did have a few events that I attended on Saturday, August 21st. I attended the Bulldogs game. They played the Delray Rocks, and I made a presentation to the Bulldog, and I was there all day. It was quite a crowd. Matter of fact, there were two and three breast tents all the way around the field. I think everybody in Delray and Boynton were there. On August the 26th, which is Thursday, I participated with the Feeding South Florida. Leslie and her staff were just outstanding. But we do need help. Those of you who feel that you have a couple of hours on Thursday morning between 7:00 and 9:00, we would appreciate your participation. Also, on Friday, the 22nd, I attended the student art showcase. I want to tell you that our youth really have tremendous talent that's hidden, but it's coming out, and I'm happy to that Boynton Beach has given our youth an opportunity to express themselves in art. On Saturday, August 28th, we had the MLK I Have a Dream event here at Amphitheater. It was well organized. We had some outstanding music by the Miami Sound, Soundbite. And we have a rapper, the J.I.G. Harvey and DJ Huckabuck. It was a really great event. The only bad thing that I can say about it was the attendance was not what I expected. I want to commend Eleanor and her staff for the effort and work that they put to make that a success. But I do know, and I got a few phone calls telling me that there were three funerals that were going on on that day that were major, and that's where a lot of the people were. So that's the reason behind that. On this past Thursday, again, I worked with the Feeding South Florida, and I want to say happy Rosh Hashanah to all of my Jewish friends. Happened September 7th and 8th, and also the upcoming Yom Kippur on September 16th. And I understand that this is the year 5782 for them. That's, I'll let the mayor explain that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, as for myself, on August 19th, I attended a Congress Middle School supply giveaway. So with a partnership of Office Depot and the Strong Heart Foundation, we were able to supply over 3,000 spiral notebooks to the students to make sure that they have a place to write down their notes, write down their thoughts, write down their homework assignments. We were able to give them to Boynton Beach Community High School, Congress Middle School, Crosspoint, and I believe Forest Park. In addition, also, I attended the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force and went to the zero empty spaces over in Compton Place in Renaissance Commons for keeping the arts alive. I also attended the Bulldogs versus Delray Rocks. I thought it was a tremendous event. I want to give kudos and commend our police department as there were a lot of people there, and there was no incidents that I'm aware of. What people were calling it was Unity Day, of getting Boynton Beach and Delray together in an aspect of unity. And so that hopefully next year, we can do a better planning and have and getting more out of the unity from each of the cities, and hopefully do some things the week up to it. Next, on August 24th, I spoke with John Markey and Jeff Johnson of JKM, and I showed them last year at this time the $25 million in tax incremental community benefits program they offered us. And I was asking if that offer is still on the table, and they said, no, it was not. They did say that there was another offer, and for me, I'd like to see any sort of revised site plans and discuss that in the sunshine, because this is something that affects the community. Any sort of changes or minor site plan modifications, changes to the Northern Parcel, I feel that we need to have that discussion in the sunshine the next time we have that discussion. August 27th, I met with representatives of United Way in the Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber. I was on Human Rights Media, talking about institutionalized categorization. And then that evening, attended a student showcase where we had a very good showing from Crosspoint Elementary. On August 28th, I was up in West Palm Beach at Gaines Park for the March On event, and then attended the City of Boynton Beach's I Have a Dream, where the theme was Imoja, which is the Swallow Healy word for unity. And I'd also like to give a big shout out to Christ Fellowship, who helped set up a lot of the different events, and to thank all the different nonprofits that were there. As our Vice Mayor was saying, this is Rosh Hashanah, and so the Shana Tova means a good new year in Hebrew. And yes, 5782. This is kind of the year, the seventh year. So it's almost a sabbatical year for the Jews that they're supposed to let the land heal. So they're not supposed to farm this year, and it's an aspect of contacting our neighbors and really going, getting back to nature, so to speak. In addition, and then today, at 2:00, I attended our first Memorial Tree event that we've had a long time for Jason White, who was a recipient of the awesome Greyhound adoptions over at Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park. They planted a beautiful crepe myrtle that will hopefully be flowering very soon. And I want to thank Casey Young for bringing back the Memorial Tree Program to help people memorialize their loved ones and for giving them a living monument to go to. In addition, before the CRA meeting, I was able to say hello to the Business Development Board staff over at our Arts and Cultural Center. They have a meeting tonight talking about their coming, which means the people from up north that are coming down to live in Boynton Beach, and how does our county best utilize the incoming demographics for economic activity? And I did speak with Michael Weiner in regards to item 12B, and that is it for myself. Mayor? Yes?
One other observation. I was at the Delray Beach Bulldogs game, and I noticed that at the beginning of each game, they did a a pledge of allegiance, but there's no flag. So I'm hoping that we, the city, could put some kind of flag out there for recognition so that when we do the pledge of allegiance, we will have a flag present.
Yeah, so I spoke with Tom Kaiser, and he says he'd like to buy a new flagpole for the one for Veterans Park, and that we could use the one that is currently there, hopefully at the Hester Center. Excellent. So let's see if we can get staff to that information so we can move forward.
Thank you.
If there's no more informational items by the members of the City Commission, we will move on to item 2D, which is conduct the first public budget hearing for fiscal year 2021-2022, proposed millage and tentative annual operating budget, proposed resolution number 21-104 and 21-105.
Thank you, Mayor. Mara, our Director of Finance, is going to go ahead and take us through. You've seen it a couple of times already, but I don't know how much the public has. So we have, this is our first of two budget public hearings that we will be holding to take you through and explain the budget and our millage, and ultimately, we'll be discussing a fire assessment and a canal assessment as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Frederickson, Director of Financial Services. Hopefully, I'll give you the abbreviated version tonight rather than our July workshop. So tonight, our budget approval schedule. You're approving the budget, the first public budget hearing. We're adopting the final fire assessment rate and the canal maintenance special assessment as well. And then Tuesday, September 21st, we'll have our second public budget hearing as well. Next slide, please. The purpose of these budget hearings are to discuss your 21-22 tentative operating and capital budget, provide an opportunity for the comment from our public, adopt a millage rate and tentative budget, adopt your rate resolution for your fire assessment, adopt a rate resolution for your canal assessment. And then we'll also go through some of the changes that we've made since the July workshop as well. Next slide, please. So in your general fund, you'll see there's a net difference, actually, a decrease of $72,195. Some of that, and I'll go through your revenues first and then your expenditures. We reduced our revenues by $54,000 due to the decrease from millage rate from 7.9 to 7.89. We saw an increase in our state shared revenue for $65,800, and that's just based on your estimated from the Department of Revenue, which comes out in August. So that's why it's post your July workshop. We saw an increase of $348,000 in our sales tax revenue estimates, which we're pretty excited about. So hopefully, that comes to fruition. We added an additional $12,000 for amphitheater revenue. And then at the July workshop, which we have already discussed, is using the additional $350,000 for your revenue losses. So your change in fund balance is actually $793,510 back to fund balance this year, based on some of those changes. On the expenditure side, for the general fund, we saw wage increase. That was discussed at the July workshop from 2% to 3%. It's $187,000 in effect to the general fund. In financial services, there was a slight reclassification for our grant manager and our payroll staff. So we saw an increase of about $8,000 there. There was in the new building fund, the 130 fund, we saw a decrease actually in the general fund of $288,000. Some of those personnel were actually classified already in the general fund and the 130 fund. So that's why you're seeing that decrease there. We added smart sheets in the ITS department. That's a $10,000 increase. And then your prototype, which is your minutes translation services, is a $10,000 increase there. Next slide, please. So across all your other funds on the revenue side, you see an increase in the local option fuel taxes. Again, that's the Department of Revenue. We get those estimates in August. You see an increase in revenue of $75,000 and a decrease in use of fund balance of $75,000. So it just offsets there. The use of fund balance adjustment, 2% to 3% across all funds is $145,000. And then the Public Service Tax Fund, although we accounted for the transfer on the general fund of $1 million, we didn't account for it on the Public Service Tax Fund itself. So that's the transfer you're seeing there. And then also the transfer of the ARP revenue losses to the general fund from the Public Service Tax that was decided at the July workshop of $350,000. And then the use of fund balance, an increase of $100,000. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, you're seeing that wage increase from 2% to 3% of $145,000. Again, that transferred to your Public Service Tax. It's just the expenditures have to be offset by the revenues. And then in utilities, there was a reorganization there. We're just evaluating some of the vacant positions, adding some administrative and fiscal and grant and safety oversight there. So you're seeing a zero FTE increase, but $100,000 increase. Next slide, please. So some of these slides, you've kind of already seen. Your funding sources, this is all of your funding sources of the $251.2 million. And I can't see that from here, but your major funding sources, your water and sewer utility fees, and then your property taxes and capital improvement. Next slide, please. And on the expenditure side of that, you're seeing 251.2. What makes that up? General fund is 102.4 million of that. Your utility is 54.9, and your capital is 42.2 million of that. Next slide, please. So this is just a breakdown by fund of what your amended budget for next year versus last year's 21-2021 budget. The general fund is 102.3 million. Your enterprise funds total 68.9 million. Your internal service funds are 16.7 million. Next slide, please. Your special revenue funds make up 9.2 million. Our capital improvement funds themselves make up 42.2 million, and our debt service funds make up 11.6 to come up to your 251 million. Next slide, please. So your proposed tax levy versus your rollback rate. At the commission workshop, we did go back to the 7.89 mils versus the 7.9. The rollback rate would have been 7.6362. If you had gone back to the rollback rate, you would see a deficit of 1.1 million there. Next slide, please. Your proposed ad valorem tax rate this year is 7.89. We're not proposing an increase. Actually, it's a slight decrease from your 7.9, and the actual tax increase is 3.32% per your state term calculations over your rollback rate. Next slide, please. So here's basic property and what the impact would be for the 7.89 mils for a $50,000 homestead property. At last year, they would see about a monthly rate of $16.46. At the 7.89, they're seeing about $16.90. And that's about a 2 cent difference from your 7.9 mils versus your 7.89. Some of the as they go up, some of those experience like a 38% or 38 cent per month decrease as well. Next slide, please. Your commercial property, a $52,000 property, is seeing about $34.58 per month. They saw a little bit larger decrease, 5 cents to 88 cents decrease per month with the new millage rate change. Next slide, please. That's all I have to do.
Is there any questions from the commission? John, I'm going to ask you to open up the attendees online. And if anyone from the audience has any questions, now would be the time for item 2D.
Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. I have enabled both the raise hand option if anybody would like to ask a question, and then also the questions box if anybody would like to type a question.
Thank you. And I do want to remind everyone that is listening that if you would want to see the budget, you can just type in Boynton Beach budget into Google, and it's the first link webpage. And then there's the first link for the 2021-2022 budget. It is 287 pages. So please give yourself some time to read it thoroughly. And then it's also for the commission. You know, we see our biggest revenue source as the water utility. And I know that, or I believe that we asked the City Commission or the city staff to speak with our lobbyists about having a annexation through legislative intent to see where, if anything, that is going for that area between Old Boynton Road and Gateway so that we can incorporate the 14 acres of wooded area.
Yes, sir, and it's on our list. We have a meeting set up with Matt Forrest. I think you're in the next week or two. John has it set up.
Thank you. There being no further comments? Yes?
Mayor, if you'd like. Excuse me, Mayor Grant. There is a hand raised in the virtual audience. If you would like, I would unmute Ellen Jones.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I had a question about the slide that reflected a decrease in revenue from arts. Can you flip that to that? It looked like the only one that was less than last year. Perhaps explain that to me?
Please direct me to which slide you would like to see.
Revenues, and one of them was arts, public arts right there. Go forward.
Expenditures, revenue.
Maybe it's backwards. Just a second.
Okay.
So I see it as public arts, 540,000, 155,000 in 2020-2021, down to 303,689, a decrease of 242,000.
I'm curious why that's the only one that went down.
So a lot of that revenue actually is made up of, it's subsidized by the general fund. But last year, it was funded as much as it was due to Town Square acquisition. We purchased a lot of art pieces last year as well. So it was higher last year. It's going back to what it typically was, plus the kinetic event is not part of that as well this year.
So Mara, how is, how does the city get the funding for the public arts again?
Public art is through your building permit fee. That's a portion of it. Certain
1% of the construction value of a permit, everything over $250,000. And that 1%, 70% of that 1% goes into the actual art, and 30% of that 1% goes into the administration of the public art program. And that fluctuates depending on what we anticipate as projects coming in each year. Last year, we acquired probably about, I think it's roughly about a half a million dollars in public art for the entirety of Town Square with synesthesia and reflections. Although, you know, we had to subsidize that until the remainder of the project funds come in from the private developer.
Ellen, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, would you like to speak on the budget? On the budget? Yes. You have to come to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record.
Ernest McNally, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach. I had a question. If you talked about the increases in the tax.
Speak into the microphone, sir.
About the increases, I'm just
When you speak, that's where the microphone is.
The what?
Face us, so you can speak into the microphone.
Okay. I'm wondering if the person who just did the presentation could use an example of the tax increase on a $400,000 home and a $1 million business instead of a $35,000 business and a $55,000 home, which I didn't know if they existed in Boynton Beach, do they?
I believe there were examples of a half a million dollar home in the materials. Yeah.
Oh, there. Well, I'm just saying, in the presentation, it was used was a $55,000 home and a $35,000 business. I just don't know where they exist, but anyway.
So she
So what would the increase be on a $1 million business and a $300,000 home?
So you're a $1 million business, and it is actually in the slide presentation, which is at the back of the building as well. Their monthly property taxes currently are $658.33. It's going up $33.36 per month. So it would go to $691.69 per month for a $1 million property.
And that's based on what the average property increase in the city was, which is all we can do versus specific properties. That's calculated at about 5.2%. So that's based on an average of the property value going up 5.2%.
Excuse me, sir. We can't hear you from when you're sitting down. You have to speak into the microphone if you'd like to continue.
A $1 million business would go up how much a month?
$33.36 per month, based on an average net increase of 5.2%.
And then Mara, what would it go at the max?
The max would see a $64.92 increase.
So we're talking about 800,000 a year roughly?
$723 per month, yes.
And on a, on a $300,000 home?
Now that is, so the, you're confusing commercial and residential because a homestead residential.
He's just asking, he's not, he's just asking the residential. We didn't answer the residential. Can you just go to the residential forum, please?
There's a difference between non-homestead residential and homestead residential. Are you asking for homestead residential or non-homestead residential?
Well, what are, what are you talking about? I don't understand the difference. Maybe explain it.
So homesteaded residential is limited to the, was it the CPI or 3% max? Non-homestead residential is restricted to a 10% max increase per year in property assessment. So what we have in our presentation is four numbers for the residential properties of 50,000, 150,000, 250,000, 500,000 as examples. And for commercial property or non-homestead residential, we have examples of 50,000, 150,000, 500,000 and a million, just as examples, because it is all assessed at the, the 7.89 millage rate based upon whatever thousands of dollars of property value.
So certain residents have a cap and others don't?
Correct.
No commercial have a cap?
10% cap.
10%.
On all Florida properties, according to the constitutional amendment of 2018.
Okay. And, and just one list. Were these based on any real properties? Or is this just like as an example?
Just on an example.
Okay. So are there any $55,000 homes or $35,000 businesses in Boynton Beach? There are?
Oh, yeah. There's numerous condos that have been homesteaded for years regarding the recession that are still
That are homesteaded?
Yes.
Not the other version?
Oh, the, the non-homesteaded at $50,000. There are some vacant lots that are priced at that amount. So, yeah.
Vacant lot without a home?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. There are no additional questions or raised hands in the go-to webinar interface.
All right. Thank you so much. So Jim, I'll ask you to read resolution 21-104.
Resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for the city's general operating fund for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending September 30th, 2022. Announcing the percentage, if any, the proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate. Announcing the date, time and place of the second and final public hearing on the budget and millage rate, providing for severability conflict and providing an effective date. Need to point out that section two of the resolution provides the proposed millage rate for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year shall be 7.8900 for the general fund. Also need to point out in section four that the proposed millage rate is 3.32% above the computed rollback rate of 7.6362. And that the second and final public hearing on the budget will be September the 21st, 2021 at 5:30 PM here in the commission chambers.
So I may have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And Jim, did you also read 105?
A resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2021 and ending September 30th, 2022, providing for severability, conflict and ineffective date. And in section 23 of the resolution, it provides that the second and final public hearing will be September the 21st, 2021 at 5:30 PM here in the commission chambers.
May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And my final discussion is for Christine and Justin. This is our sixth and final budget to approve. I would just want to congratulate you both and myself. You know, so we got 1/12 of our term left.
I love it. Thank you, Mayor.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 2B, conduct a public hearing to adopt the final special assessment resolution for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 to fund the costs of annual canal aquatic maintenance services for the Lake Eden Four Canals and Lake Shore Haven Canal.
Mayor, this is resolution R21118, a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida relating to the provision of canal maintenance services in the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the assessed costs and assessment rates for canal maintenance services for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, imposing canal maintenance service special assessment against assessed property located within the city of Boynton Beach for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, providing for severability, providing for conflict and providing an effective date.
Do we have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Chris Rochek, engineering division manager with utilities. And I'd like to go through a brief presentation regarding the aquatic maintenance program. Next slide, please. The project area is shown on the screen. It's basically between, or excuse me, south of Mission Hill Road for the, the Lake Shore Haven Canals and the Lake Eden Canals. Next slide. The aquatic maintenance services include monthly algae and aquatic weed control. They didn't, the services do not include dredging or any other capital items or repairs. The objective of the aquatic management program is to prevent the canals from being clogged with vegetation, to allow for boats and other vessel movement, to eliminate obstruction to the free flow of the stormwater runoff and to reduce health and safety risks associated with proliferation of unwanted invasive aquatic vegetation. Next slide, please. The timeline of events to this date began in July 13th, 2021. The city commission adopted resolution number R21-077 to initiate the development of the special assessment. With the, and, and directed that the, the imposition of the canal maintenance services assessment would begin this coming fiscal year, October 1, 2021. There were several notices that were issued on July 19th, 2021. The notice was included in the, on the city website in the public notices, notices section. On July 29th, 2021, the city had complied with the requirement to send mailed notice to property owners and those were sent by certified mail. And on August 19th, the city published in the Palm Beach Post, a notice of hearing to impose and provide for collection of canal maintenance services special assessment, which we're doing tonight. Next slide, please. The next slide is a summary of the costs for both the Lake Shore Haven Canal and the Four Lake Eden Canals. The total number of properties is 103 and the, the costs are being assessed by the linear footage of the waterfront for each property. I would like to point out that the costs are based on the actual contracted costs to the city for the aquatic maintenance, management services and also includes administrative costs for our staff time. And I will end with the staff's recommendation is to approve the special assessment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't necessarily have a question. I do have a comment in regards to the, I'm glad we are moving forward with this because this was a bit of a headache a long time ago with the hydrilla. In addition, on the, at the Florida League of Cities meeting, I met with Sean Patton from Stocking Savvy, who is using native flora and fauna to help canal cleaning. And so I believe he requested to speak on this item. Is that correct, John?
Yes, Mayor Grant, his hand is raised right now. If you would like, I can unmute him.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Sean Patton. I run Stocking Savvy. And yes, that is correct. There are quite a few different native plants and fish you can use to restore polluted canals and environments. However, when you're dealing with hydrilla, one of the best things to do is to implement grass carp as part of any proposal. And grass carp have a series of pros and cons. One of the biggest pros of which is they're one of the very few control methods that eats both the roots, tubers, turians and the leaves of hydrilla. And there are no chemicals that really target all of that. So they tend to have less impacts on water quality over time. And there are a variety of native plants that these carp won't eat, which tends to be one of the biggest downsides that they eat a variety of vegetation. And technology has come a long way since the 1980s when they were first implemented. We now have sterile carp, which won't spread invasively. We have a variety of acoustic bubble and other barriers to keep them in specific sections of canal. So you can keep them concentrated and proving their effectiveness. Then you can use other native fish and plants alongside of them to keep water quality high, improve fishing. And we, because of the acoustic and bubble barriers, you don't have to rely on old methods of physical barriers. So I hope that this will be something that could be considered in the canal assessment because the fish themselves are far cheaper and last far longer than any herbicide and are less damaging to the environment. Though I understand if harvesting or herbicides need to be used to help get severe infestations under control. And if the city of Boynton Beach needs a resource, I'm happy to be that. If there's any questions, I'm happy to stay on the call for a little bit and answer those.
Sean, I thank you for the, the information. I will forge your information to our engineering staff so that they can hopefully speak with you about the, the certain methods and do a cost analysis and determine what would be the best for these canals for maintenance. In addition, one of the things that I was speaking with is to buying some aquatic plants from Stocking Savvy to, to place on my dock. And I may have extras, so I want to know if it's okay that I can put some of the, the extra plant, native Florida plants in the city-owned lakes. I was thinking of the Lake Webster next to the Eco Park. So those, those are my comments regarding this item here.
Mayor Grant, this is John McNally again. I do have a comment that was submitted through, I believe, the city manager's office and I'll present that up on the screen. This is from Mr. Jim Hendricks. If you like, I can read it or if you prefer to read it yourself, that's your choice.
The comment from Jim Hendricks is that I'm Jim Hendricks and my wife Michelle and I own property at 821 Southwest 33rd Place in Boynton Beach. I'd like to share my firsthand experience in dealing with account now maintenance for the last five years and dispel what I consider to be erroneous information. Historically, the canals have been treated for aquatic growth for a long time by the city. However, treatment was abruptly stopped by the city in 2016 due to a conflict over the interpretation of how it should be paid for. For the past five years, spraying has been done through private efforts on some canals organized by neighbors. The question still is not whether waterways need to be sprayed, but how to organize and pay for these efforts. That has been resolved and the plan was approved by majority vote of homeowners in January 2019. None of this constitutes, as, has been alleged by one neighbor in a letter to property owners as government overreach. In fact, to me, it is a prime example of government cooperation response to the wishes of its citizens as directed again by the majority vote of 105 property owners of the affected canals. The second allegation from that letter is that is a political push to destroy fresh breeding ground. I can, can speak to the politics by acknowledging how supportive our district commissioner Ron Lus and the assistant city managers, as well as the utility department have been in responding and providing a detailed and open process for everyone involved. Regarding fish breeding grounds, it is my understanding that ongoing analysis has shown that canals to be as healthy as ever with strong fish populations throughout. Just watching the large number of fishermen that troll our lakes and my own personal experience attest to the fact that our waterways are destination fishing spots and help the economy in multiple ways. They can't do that when the canals are clogged. A third point in this letter regards costs. My own experience with the spraying contractors shown them to be responsive and thorough as well as price sensitive. The city will, of course, subject the contract to the full bidding process as required. The last point in the letter addresses inequities and who pays for this for the waterfront properties on the main canal is my understanding that this is an issue for the county and Lake Worth Strange District to resolve for Boynton Beach property owners. We have only the method outlined in this assessment available to fix the problems. The intent has been to keep the canal safe for residents through elimination of the transient aquatic growth that has often completely matted the canals, made them health hazards and completely unnavable for water enthusiasts. The associated issues of storm mitigation, property value enhancement and continuity of care through a single effort are also all favorable for the property owners. I greatly hope this is approved and we can move forward with a jointful successful effort. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right. And if I see no other comments. Do we get a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all for getting us to this point.
Yes.
Only took six years.
Yeah. Now we're moving on to item 2C, conduct a public hearing to adopt the final assessment resolution for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 fire assessments.
Resolution R21103, a resolution of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities and programs in the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, imposing fire rescue assessment against assessed property located within the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, approving the rate of the assessment, approving the assessment role, confirming and continuing a procedure for hardship waivers or deferrals, deferrals of all or part of the city's fire rescue special assessment, including application review by the city, city's finance director or designate eligible criteria for waivers, providing for conflicts, for severability and providing an effective date.
Yes, we have a race in. Someone like to speak? Well, did you guys stand up in line and let us know? Excuse me, sir. If you'd like to come up to the podium. Yes, if anybody would like to speak on items, you have to come up to the podium.
Okay. My name, my name is Gary L. Fishman, under the mask.
Yes.
And I live at 3504 Diane Drive in Boynton Beach. I did not know about the fact that we weren't going to be able to speak about this. I'm speaking about it now. To all Boynton Beach city officials with the utmost respect for allowing me to speak today. It has recently come to my attention, the knowledge that the city of Boynton Beach can be reimbursed for the treatments of the weeds in our canals. According to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission in the state of Florida, we do not own the water nor the rights of the water in our canals. The state owns the waters and is responsible to make the navigable waterways passable by boaters and fishermen free of weeds and debris. Fishing licenses, boating licenses and our taxes pay for it. As a governmental agency like a city, county or other official entity, they would treat the waterways in their area and would be reimbursed by the state or Florida Fish and Wildlife. I have found this to be true. And if you can investigate, I truly would appreciate it. We don't want to have the city have any costs, but it appears like maybe they won't have to. Lake Ida and Lake Eden are treated by the county. They're reimbursed by the Florida Fish and Wildlife in the state. And so with the, with the, let me see, the Lake Worth Drainage, Lake Worth Drainage gets reimbursed. Residents cannot be reimbursed. It won't cost the other residents in Boynton Beach nor Boynton Beach itself. It's a win-win situation and I hope that you'll investigate. Besides, 99% of our weeds coming into our canal are from the lakes Ida and Eden that float in. Supposedly the county treats the lakes and aren't doing such a great job. The county is, is reimbursed by the state for all treatments. We are the dumping grounds of the lakes. Our culvert is at issue too. The diameter of the culvert is only 48 inches and three quarters of it is covered by water at the lowest water level. Frequently during rain events, the flow from the huge culvert Frequently during rain events, the flow from the huge culvert and the flow from the huge lake, excuse me, Lake Ida, at the other end, is 12 feet of clearance. So the water just completely flows into our canal. And the numerous culverts also come from I-95, Diane Drive, and South Lake Drive. So it gets overwhelmed, the culvert gets completely overwhelmed and is backed up. This has recently been discussed and is definitely a part of the weed situation. Not just the weeds flowing in, but also the fact that the culvert is small and low. My gratitude for the city's willingness to explore helping us in addressing this issue. You did vote, but however, we didn't know as an audience that we could talk. We were waiting for our chance to talk. So my humble apologies, and I hope that you can investigate this because if this is true, which I believe it is, it's a win-win situation. You get paid, and we're not charged because we pay a lot of taxes. 1/6 of my property is underwater, and I've been paying taxes on that for 30 years. So that's a lot that we've been spending. So I appreciate your time, and I'm sorry about my muffled voice. And God bless everyone.
Thank you, and we heard you pretty clear, so.
I also wanted to speak on that issue. I apologize. I was thinking you were closing for the people that were remote. Carl Cassium here on behalf of Raymond Crawl, 942 Southwest 33rd Place. Good evening to the city commissioners, a special hello to Mr. Sheriff. In any event, I echo a lot of what Mr. Fishman just said. I did speak with Tom Reinhart, who's the Southern Regional Director for FWC, and I posed something to him as well because there's a difference between the treatment and ownership of the Lake Ida and Lake Eden beds and who's supposed to maintain them and who's supposed to pay for that. It's obvious that the both lakes are supposed to be maintained by Palm Beach County and partnership with FWC. It's his position that the canals are privately owned, and that it's the responsibility of the city of Boynton Beach to maintain those at the cost of the residents. I then posed a question to him, whether or not the city has contacted anybody at the county and anybody at FWC about what's happening with the aquatic plants that are flowing from the lakes into the canals? Because it's not the canals in which these are, my understanding is that's not where these are growing. All the aquatic plants are coming from, in most cases, the lakes and then flowing into there. So it's a, sounds like it's a maintenance issue that might be the county's responsibility, and they're literally pouring that responsibility onto the city and its residents. So I think as part of this project, it would make sense. And he agreed that that might be a, that's a reasonable argument, that the city should look to the county to maintain the lake, both lakes, and maintain the aquatic plants from flowing into the canals and creating the situation that you have. And clearly, it's a, it's a good objective of the city to maintain those canals and to make sure that they're clear. But the issue really is that whose cost should this come? To your residents or maybe to the county in reimbursement in its partnership with FWC to make sure the county properly maintains those canals? And then the other issue that Mr. Crowley was concerned with is the use of pesticides because he has children and they have pets that are along those canals. That's an issue if you're using pesticides in those canals. I like the fact that the city is going to look into more environmental-friendly means. I think that would be important as well. So I think, I know you've already voted, but it would be something, instead of having a special assessment in perpetuity, the city should look into revisiting this immediately and seeing what the county can do to better maintain their waterways so that this doesn't become the residents' cost and your responsibility as a city to continue to maintain those canals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Jim, is he correct that this is in perpetuity?
No, sir, it's an annual assessment. It will be reviewed again next year.
Okay, that's good to hear, but it's unusual that a city, once it's approved, a special assessment isn't going to take it off. But those are items that I would like the city to look at on behalf of the residents as well.
I think that's kind of what we're definitely going to take a look into it and see what's going on. And that way, because we did receive a majority of the vote of the property owners to do this.
Yeah, I think if they know that the county has some responsibility, too, that would, that would be helpful. Okay, thank you.
Sir, Mr. Fishman.
Call the state. Call the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you heard my comments from earlier, this has taken over six years for us to get to this finish line. And to your comment about have we spoken to the county, we were in negotiation and talks for over two years, if Jim can affirm this, with the county to try to get to the point where we would have them actually do this work. And right when we thought we were going to get to the finish line of a productive conclusion, they pulled the rug out from under us and said no. So in essence, we have done the due diligence, we have done the work. We've been working on this, like I said, for the past six years, and this is the best solution that allows for the residents to get the clear and navigatable, if that's a word, canal, canals that they deserve, especially for quote-unquote "the amount of taxes" that the residents who live in that area pay and so rightfully deserve to use those canals as part of their property. Regarding the information about reimbursements, that can always be investigated and looked into because if there's an opportunity for us to be able to take that cost and mitigate that from both the residents and the city, I think that behooves us all to do that. So we can definitely look into that and investigate that. But at this time, I stand firmly in this decision, and we can definitely re-investigate and look back into it at another point to see if there's something that we can do prior to voting to reinstate this next year. But at this time, this is the best thing to do, in my opinion, for the residents in the area, in that community of Chapel Hill. So that's basically, those are my comments. I'm not sure if Jim wants to add or give any clarity in terms of some of the background work that we've done to get to this point, just to kind of maybe catch up some of these residents or individuals who may have questions, who may not have been privy to all the steps that we've taken for the past six years to get to this point.
Commissioner, only to reiterate what you said, which is, we did have the county's commitment to provide the service and the collection on behalf of the city on the property its owner. And at the very last minute, they did a complete reversal and said they would not do it. So that put us about a year and a half behind in that process.
Thank you. All right. And so, Jim, do we continue with the fire assessment item 2C? Where were you in the resolution? If you could start from the beginning.
I had read the resolution, and I'm not sure if there was a motion or not.
Okay, I don't believe there was.
No motion.
And I'll ask the audience, if you'd like to speak on this item, please come to the podium. John, is there anyone online that is, has raised their hand or is asking a question?
Mayor Grant, no, there are no hands raised and no questions posted.
Thank you, and I see no one at the podium. So may I have a motion to approve?
Okay.
Motion is first and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. We are done the first reading for the budget. Next, we will go on to Resolution 21-106, recognizing September 13th to the 17th, 2021 as Florida Civics Week and encouraging all city residents to honor civic engagement by participating in educational activities and community service. Let me go read that resolution. Whereas municipal government is the government closest to the people and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home. And whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to an understanding of its many responsibilities, including direct participation in the democratic process. And whereas municipal governments, officials, and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of the services provided by their municipalities and their benefits. And whereas representative government is dependent on the exercise of privileges and responsibilities of its citizens. And whereas civic and political participation remains the medium in which citizens engage in free, diverse, and positive political dialogue that guides our nation toward common interests, consensus, and good governance. Whereas it is the public interest for our nation's leaders to foster civic discourse, education, participation in federal, state, and local affairs. Whereas the advent of the revolutionary internet technology offers new mechanisms for empowering our citizens and fostering a greater civic engagement than at any time in our history. And whereas the use of new technologies can bring people together in civic forums, educate citizens on their roles and responsibilities, and promote citizen participation in the political process through volunteerism, voting, and the elevation of the diverse voices in public discourse. And whereas Florida Civics Week is a very important time to recognize the significant role played by municipal government in our lives and to spread the word to all Floridians that they can be shaped and influence this level of government. So may I have a motion?
Aho.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And the effect of having this resolution is that a copy will be provided to Governor Ron DeSantis, the Florida Cabinet, and the Florida League of Cities. Our next is proclaim the week of 17th through the 23rd, 2021 is Constitution Week. Marjorie Farrar of Daughters of the American Revolution will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas September 17, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document, its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meanings of the Constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the week of 17th through the 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting that the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardians of our liberties, remembering the lost rights that may never be regained.
Thank you, Mayor and commission members, for your support of our Constitution. Constitution Week is a commemoration of America's most important document, the United States Constitution. It is celebrated annually during the week of September 17 through 23. The U.S. Constitution was adopted by delegates at the DAR Constitutional Convention on September 17, 1787. The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. The celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 23, 17 to 23 annually, to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. This resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2, 1955, for President Dwight D. Eisenhower. For more than a century, the members of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution have dedicated themselves to historical preservation, promotion of education, and encouragement of patriotic endeavor. DAR is a non-political membership organization of women, and over 1 million daughters have joined the organization worldwide since society's founding in 1890. Membership is granted to those whose lineage has been proven to a patriot who fought or aided in the cause of the American Revolution. We now stand on the eve of a grand commemoration. In July 2026, five years from now, the United States will mark its 250th anniversary. Much like the bicentennial celebration of 1976, this observance provides an exceptional opportunity for community involvement. There are six DAR Palm Beach Chapter, Palm Beach County chapters. We have the opportunity to leave a lasting impact on our community through meaningful local projects and events during this anniversary. I look forward to reaching out to the special graduating class of 2026 each year until then, each year, with inspiring activities and community involvement. These students are now in eighth grade. Constitution Activity Week activities have been limited with COVID and children not in school, but we have worked with local library displays with 17 county and six city libraries. They receive supplies and posters and have immediate courage to put up a display. The ringing of the bells on September 17 at 4 o'clock. This has been the Constitution was signed in Philadelphia. Many fire departments nationally are involved in this activity using the bells on the fire trucks. Palm Beach County School District update. As I explained last year, we've worked with Palm Beach County Schools because this is where the kids are that are the eighth, in eighth grade now. We were able to create a separate website on the internal website for the school district that talks about Constitution Week. And last year, because of most of the schools throughout the state were learning online, we got permission from Palm Beach County School District to share the format of that website with 67 school districts. 14 of them came right on board with us, and as a result, we reached over 1.2 million students last year. This year, we're doing the same thing again, but our national president has instituted podcasts of lesser-known patriotic patriots. And there's two of them a week. They're now on the website for the school district, and they will be shared with the districts in the rest of the state. In addition, we've printed 2,400 patriotic baseball cards. I have samples here for you. And these are 12 lesser-known patriots that are all nationalities and women, many women who were involved in the national, in the American Revolution. For the 2026 America 250 activities, there is a, there is a committee set up in Washington already, working on America 250. It's only five years away. You know how fast the last two years went, so it's right up there. I am collaborating with school board member Erica Whitfield to create a steering committee with the school district to brainstorm ideas for all the participants in the county. The idea is to create activities corresponding to the curriculum for each of the five years for the students culminating in their senior year, when they will be voting and entering the military and going on to other education. The current plan is to fundraise in each community to purchase a DAR Constitution book so that every eighth grader has their own book with their name inside of the book. And that's their book, their own constitution, their personal constitution. So we appreciate everything you've done. I'm sure you hear more from us as things evolve with our students. I have no idea how many eighth graders there are in Boynton Beach, but I'm sure the school district knows by now, school has started. So we'll be working to get each one of them their, their own Constitution book, which looks like, yes, oops. It's a great book, costs a dollar. And then I also, we've created the bookmarks with interesting facts about the Constitution. So I have these for you. And also, if you, if you lost it, I have another poster of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence for you. So these are for you all, too.
The city commission office. Oh, do we got another copy? I thought we already have one in the library.
We gave one to the library last year because your library was closed during construction when we first did this. But if they've lost it, let me know, and I'll get another one for you. But you can post that where most people will see it here in your beautiful new building.
So thank you so much. You know, I forgot what the book was called regarding the Constitutional Congress.
Yes.
And the discussions where they voted on George Washington to be the chair of that Congress because they felt that he was the only one. It was very interesting. It was very interesting, the discussions that they had and the majorities that they needed, and how the different members, different representatives from the different states were all from different financial backgrounds as well.
Absolutely.
Making the different decisions. And you had almost the difference between large states versus small states, the wealthy states versus the not-so-wealthy states. But I did have a question regarding the amendments to the Constitution. What does your organization do to help educate the public on that?
Well, we work with individual communities. There's like the chapters that can work with the community in whatever way you need us to do that. The D.A.R. has a speakers committee that is very well-known on certain topics, and they're available. We're here to work with you on just educating the community. We find that many people, when I asked them, when was the last time they read the Constitution? It was like in fifth grade. You know, they read parts of it in fifth grade and haven't paid attention to it. But this controlled group of kids, as they move through their education level to get to the graduating class, I'm sure that there will be, just like in the bicentennial, that diploma had a gold sticker on it. You know, it was a special group of students. And they will be voting, and they will be entering the military, and they need to be educated. So working with the civics organizations, the Sons of the Revolution have already engaged with me about online civics lessons that are available to the teachers so they can share them with the students. And there's a lot that's going to happen. It's just like we have time, it's five years, but we, you know, time flies, as we all know.
Eric, please educate me because maybe I just don't know. But in what ways are your organization inclusive in terms of, from the knowledge that I understand, most of the people who were around during the revolution were white males? So how do we include other communities who may not necessarily feel like they are quote-unquote "Daughters" or "Sons" of the revolution? And how do we make sure that they feel like they're patriots in this country as well? Because they are. And, you know, what do you do to kind of address that?
Well, one of the things we did do, these patriotic baseball cards, are women and Black and Brown patriots. And the podcasts that are being done by our President General are all the lesser-known people that had something to do. The genealogy and the history between all of the patriots is enormous. That word doesn't get out generally much beyond our chapters, and that's probably our fault. But there are a lot of people that helped with the revolution, and we're just trying to educate them. These podcasts, she does two of them a week. So the website now with the school district, I think they have twenty of them up there. And I'll make that available to your city manager, the website, the podcast thing, and you can go look at them yourself. And it's just a matter of the communication, trying to get the word out. We're working with News Channel Five to try to promote this, and also letters to the editor and trying to just get the word out. I mean, we're all small groups, and we just need the cities to help us do that. And whatever we can do with your PR staff, I'm available.
Yeah, so to clarify, you said one of your criteria for anybody to join the Daughters of the American Revolution is that they have to be able to trace their lineage back to the revolution. How does that work, especially when it comes to Black and Brown communities?
This used to be our registrar. It's hard because you have to create birth, death, and marriage certificates for everyone. And for a lot of the minorities that fought in American Revolution, especially a lot of the women, don't have a birth certificate. And so it's very hard. But there are people in D.A.R. that are focusing on trying to get the documents from where they were born and how they entered and what they did. It's amazing, some of the stories that you'll see on the podcast that I'm still learning. I mean, I wasn't taught any of that in school. So it's, you know, working through the school district. I think they are excited about that as well. They're making all this available to all the teachers, and it's a matter of getting it down to the students.
So is there a scenario where a young girl might want to be a daughter of the American Revolution, and she couldn't be because they couldn't trace her lineage?
And what? I'm sorry.
Is there a situation that could occur where if a young girl who wants to be a daughter of the American Revolution could not have her lineage traced back to that because maybe of records or whatever, what would occur in that situation?
Well, it's hard. I will tell you that it's hard. I'm working with someone from my church, and we're stuck back like almost to the American Revolution, and we're trying to find documents for her. But it's very hard. It's, what's happening now? Do you want to speak? Yes, this is Marilyn Naudium. She's the genealogist of our group.
The thing that the D.A.R. is starting to do now is that they're actually looking at using DNA, you know, and using that to trace people back rather than just paper records.
Right, because I would hope that you understand that that is a very difficult issue, especially when it comes to Black and Brown communities.
But it's also, it doesn't get burnt when they burn down courthouses. It doesn't get destroyed like a lot of paper records did, especially in the South. It was the Civil War. They destroyed many courthouses and records. So the DNA lives on in us, and it's something that they're looking at very closely. I mean, they haven't started approving it yet for proof, but it's going to happen.
Okay, well, I look forward to seeing that other way of being able to approve members to come into your organization because I can definitely see the problematic issues with simply using paperwork to try to track lineage, especially when it comes to those communities who were targeted and affected, especially throughout history, where their history may not exist.
There's a lot of records that are being traced back through the churches as well, the ones that kept the good records that didn't get destroyed because they kept track of who was born and when. It gives us something to work on.
Also cemetery records.
Cemetery records.
They use quite a bit.
Yeah, they have them. It's not easy, but we work on it. We're trying to get as many Daughters in as we can.
Sounds good. Thank you, ladies.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Our next proclamation is proclaim the month of September. Hunger Action Month, Sari Betzka, Executive Vice President of Feeding South Florida, will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas September is Hunger Action Month, an initiative created by Feeding America to help raise awareness about the issue of hunger in the United States and in local communities. And whereas hunger is an issue of critical concern to the city of Boynton Beach, it is therefore important we take action to break the cycle of hunger and poverty and address the root causes of hunger. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach is therefore committed to working with Feeding South Florida, the leading domestic hunger relief organization serving Palm Beach, Broward, Miami-Dade, and Monroe Counties, serving twenty-five percent of the state's food insecure population. And whereas during this past year, over one million individuals in South Florida, over three hundred thousand of whom are children, relied on more than one hundred fifty-four million pounds of food provided by Feeding South Florida's direct service programs and its network of five hundred-plus community partners. And whereas Feeding America Food Banks across the country, including Feeding South Florida, will host several events throughout September to raise awareness about the issue of hunger and inspire action toward ending in their local community. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand twenty-one, as Hunger Action Month.
So good evening, Mayor Grant and Commission and City Manager. Happy New Year to those who observe. We got to get you an orange kebab, Mayor Grant. So everyone has seen the distributions that we've done over the past eighteen months. And we can talk about the large scale of numbers that we've served together just in Boynton Beach alone of the one hundred and fifty-four million pounds. We provided over five million to just Boynton Beach, three million of which came through our drive-throughs. But I do just want to take a few moments to talk about the other side of what we do because it's not just mass food distributions that address the issue. Hunger is a symptom of something larger. It's a symptom of a systemic breakdown, and we know that needs don't exist in isolation. So when we talk about social determinants of health and breaking the cycle of hunger and poverty, we're talking about housing, we're talking about education, we're talking about transportation, and we're talking about issues that cause food insecurity. And so pre-COVID, we saw about seven hundred thousand people that needed our services. And in the height of the pandemic, we saw over one point five million relying on our support, about forty percent of those doing so for the first time. And we know that hunger is disproportionately impacts communities of color. In fact, today, the USDA released a report that although the number of food insecure individuals is down from the height of the pandemic, one thing that persists is still the impact that it has on Black and Latinx households. There impacted more than double white households, which only experience about seven point six percent of food insecurity. So we have a lot of work to do. And to address the root causes, Feeding South Florida goes beyond just food distribution. For those of you that have not been to our warehouse off Park Ridge Boulevard across from the Publix Distribution Center, we invite everyone to come out. We have a beautiful five thousand square foot commercial kitchen. We're doing culinary training. We're doing warehouse training. We're teaching people skills and putting them to work. We're placing them in jobs where they can have a career. And Feeding South Florida recently raised its minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour as an example of where the community should go. And we only place people in jobs that pay that amount with progressive opportunity to move forward. And so just want to thank everyone on behalf of Feeding South Florida, Leslie, the team, everyone that you see every week. We truly feel at home in this city. Three years ago, we stood up here and said that we were Boynton's best kept secret, and I think we've done a lot of work to change that. So on behalf of those we serve, we want to thank you and invite everyone out to come see our facility. We've got some great stuff going on.
Thank you, Sari. And yes, please let us know about the, what is it, the Community Caring Center, so to speak, the trainings that are available. I know that, what is it, the twelve-week culinary, did that already start?
Yes, we're in our second cohort. Our first cohort, we graduated four people. They've all been placed in jobs. We have a hundred percent placement rate. And this second cohort is going to graduate in a couple of weeks. So we'll definitely let you know. You can come out and help present at the ceremony.
Absolutely, thank you. And then the warehousing is also, we had a couple of residents have been speaking to me like, what can I do? And I'm like, you know, if you have that warehousing skill, as we're seeing that there's more warehouses being built in Palm Beach County, I really appreciate you helping train the community in that manner.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
And I would like to say, really appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I'm out there every Thursday. I'll be there in the morning. And we need help. Any of you have a couple of hours between seven and nine? Come on out. I'd really like to put a plug in for Leslie and her staff. They're doing an outstanding job in keeping it moving, well-organized, and everyone is helping very cooperative. I just feel that we need to get just a few more hands out there to help us out. It's a tremendous experience, exposure to people, to have an opportunity to talk to people and really find out a lot of information about them. So I just want to commend you guys again for doing an outstanding job. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you for being out there every week. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm coming upon a year myself.
Yeah, we got to get you out to the kitchen.
Thanks, sir.
And Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. Just before we move on, I'm not sure if this is related to this topic, but there is a member of the audience with their hand raised, Mr. Court McQuire. I'm going to unmute him. And he is self-muted. Court, if you're available to unmute your microphone, if you wish to speak.
Yes, I think it was a glitch. I did not ask to speak, but I appreciate the attentiveness.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the next proclamation for the month of September, two thousand twenty-one, as National Library Card Sign-Up Month. Madison Kajosa, Library Marketing and Outreach Manager, will accept the proclamation on behalf of the Boynton Beach City Library. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the lifelong education development of children, and whereas libraries offer a variety of programs to stimulate an interest in reading and learning. Library resources serve students of all ages, from early literacy to STEAM programs to research databases. And whereas signing up for a library card is the first step on the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, and a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond. And whereas librarians create welcoming and invasive and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another. A library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests, whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding services to meet the evolving needs of their communities. Now therefore, I Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand and twenty-one, as National Library Card Sign-Up Month, and encourage all residents to sign up for their own Boynton Beach City Library card. It helps reading, too.
Thank you to Mayor Grant and to the commissioners for allowing us to have this proclamation and to continue to spread awareness of all the ways that the Boynton Beach City Library provides services and learning opportunities for our community. I did want to give a little introduction into the theme of National Library Card Sign-up Month, which is put on by the American Library Association. And so the chair for this year is a young girl named Marley DS, and she created a list called One Thousand Black Girl Books, which in her quest to seek Black female characters in books, she compiled this big list with all these different submissions. And I think that this highlights the ever-growing efforts of libraries to be spaces where people can experience diversity and inclusion and see themselves the stories of characters and of people in books. And so in this past, during this past year, despite the challenges of the pandemic, we were proud to produce special collections and programs for Black History Month, Pride Month, Asian Heritage Month, Mental Health Month, and more. We also celebrated the opening of our Creative Edge Studio, which is a brand-new space that allows people, creative entrepreneurs, to come in and bring their business ideas to life. We have equipment such as a 3D printer, a embroidery machine, a 3D scanner, a crooked machine, all designed to allow people to bring their business ideas to reality. And for anyone who is interested in looking at our September programming, we offer programs every month for people of all ages. I brought copies of our September program calendar in addition to our borrowing trifold. They're at the back if anybody would like to look. All are welcome to come and participate in our programs and get a library card. Most residents of Palm Beach County can get a free library card through the reciprocal borrowing agreement that we have with cities such as West Palm Beach and Delray Beach. So thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for supporting the library.
Thank you, Madison. I really enjoyed the Storytime programs that the library offered. And it's said something that's continuing.
Yes, and actually, this month, we are celebrating Deaf Awareness Month in collaboration with Inclusive Boynton Beach. And we will have a signing Storytime where we will have a deaf member of our community sign a book to children. And so in addition to reading the story as usual, they will be able to learn sign language, which will be very cool. And we also have an American Sign Language International Day of Sign Language Celebration this month where we have an interpreter, Beth Wagmeister, sharing sign language with the community. And then we have more community members sharing their experiences as deaf and being deaf and how the city supports those residents. As we all know, it does a very great job of, so.
Thank you so much. And the Wi-Fi hotspots, are those also still available?
Yes, so we have free Wi-Fi hotspots. Yes, so we have free Wi-Fi hotspots that citizens can check out if they need Wi-Fi. We also have laptops and computers inside the library that are free to use for anyone with a library card. If you need a space to do research, work on your resume, we have a representative from Curious, Palm Beach County, here every Tuesday, 9:00 to 4:00, offering free employment assistance, career searching, access to the unemployment website to help people file claims, follow up on claims, completely free to anyone, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have announcement by Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director for the 9/11 Remembrance Memorial Ceremony being held at Centennial Park Amphitheater on Saturday, September 11th at 10:00 a.m.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here tonight to announce the city, that the city along with the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force will host a 9/11 Remembrance Memorial Ceremony this Saturday, September 11th, at Centennial Park Amphitheater, starting at 10:00 a.m. Join us as we remember the lives lost during this tragic event in U.S. history. Also, after the event, Mission Barbecue is inviting all veterans and purchase bonders to visit the restaurant for lunch after the event. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. And in addition, I'm going to be at the Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park at 8:30 to 9:30 to have moments of silence for the planes hitting the Twin Towers, Pentagon, and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, for anyone who would like to be there to honor the people that were lost.
Mayor, if I may add, for the public, we will have a very large tent at the amphitheater with fans. We know we have a lot of people in jackets and ties and uniforms and honor guards, and it's quite warm out there. We'll also have chilled water. But we will do everything we can to have people, one, out of the sun and as comfortable as possible. And I just wanted to let you know, we heard this afternoon that our Delta Demons, the unit that we've adopted, have been deployed and will not be able to come down this weekend after all of our planning. Yeah, so we, I don't know where they're going, they can't tell us. But our, I canceled our meet and greet Friday.
Okay.
We'll cancel. And then they were going to participate in the ceremony along with our police and fire honor guards. But we're okay with all that, that everything goes on as planned. But I just wanted to let you know that. So we'll get them down here again when we can, but.
And I know that in the old library, we used to have a letter of writing available for soldiers. Is that something we could do for the?
That's one of our initiatives we want to do is a pen pal program again. And we're working on some ideas for Thanksgiving and the holidays for the soldiers that don't get an opportunity to necessarily go home or have family or families that need a little extra help. So we'll be, we'll be hitting you up for some help.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
You mentioned about the fans. Are we looking at putting some permanent fans in the ceiling of the amphitheater? That you brought it up?
I don't know if that's possible. Yeah, I know, it's because it really cuts the breeze off. We're gonna have fans on the stage and then attached to the tents, blowing, you know, on people. So it gives you some kind of a breeze because it's gonna be hot.
Okay.
But I'll, we'll have engineering look at it. I don't know.
Thank you.
The second public budget hearing to adopt the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget will be held during the City Commission meeting on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 5:30 p.m. in the City Commission Chambers. Lori, I know that, I've talked to you about it, but I failed to mention it during the approval is the aspect of the raises for the general employees. As you know, the unions have their own bargaining, but our general employees do not. And during the July budget hearing, I requested that we have equal raises for the general employees based upon their department. If you'll give me a couple of minutes to explain the difference between equal raises versus equitable raises versus inequitable raises. For example, let's say we have a department of three people who, you know, earn $10, $20, and $30. You know, if each of them get a 10% raise, that means the person making $10 gets $1, person making $20 gets $2, and the person making $30 gets $3. That's kind of the inequitable raise if we do a flat percentage rate increase. You know, if we were doing an equitable raise, then that person making $10 would get 3, person making 20 would still get 2, and that person making 30 would get 1. I'm not saying that's what I'm looking for. I'm saying that we add up all the numbers. We add up the 1, 2, 3 to get to 6, and we divide that by the three employees so that each person would get $2. And so that you're creating more of a team aspect for the departments, that each of them get an equal raise for, you know, the year worth of work, rather, because these are not necessarily merit raises. And so this is something that I like to see if the City Commission would like to look into this and see about getting the numbers. It shouldn't cost any more. The fact is, is that if we do it based upon the inequitable way, we are increasing the salary on the top the most and at the bottom the least. And that's something that I'd like to see changed, at least for the general employees. Yes. But I guess the issue is that the salaries are presumably based on their skill levels and experiences and their skill set based on their position. So if I work for 20 years for the city and I have $30 an hour, I maybe should get more than a person who's worked for the city for one year and has $10 an hour. So I think the percent raise is a way to get equal percents for everyone, but also acknowledge that the salary differences are based on variables that make people's labor worth more or less. Absolutely. It's, you know, trying to take the totality of the person that just came to this country that may not have a college education and is trying to raise their family here versus somebody that has, you know, has ancestors lived in this country, who was able to own homes for a very long time, was able to build wealth. You know, there's that aspects of the totality of the circumstances. The way that I'd like to just get an example, I spoke with our city manager of looking at the HR department and just to see what it takes, looks like there. Because, you know, we have an aspect of building wealth as one of our pillars in this community. And if we're not giving the people who make the least amount of money, if we're giving the people who make the least amount of money the least amount of raises, and we're telling them, okay, well, you need to do, you know, go to school, get into debt, and then work very hard and to see if there's a job available. I'd rather just to see what it looks like for our HR department to see, you know, how that would affect each department individually. I'm not saying that it's, you know, the difference between all the different departments. I'm just saying it's based upon the department that's doing, that are all working together. But I do understand if you feel like, you know, you have the education and you worked at your job for a very long time and you're at the top, that you feel like you should get the most raise, that's an opinion. My opinion is, is they're all on the same team and they should try to get somewhat more of a similar raise because otherwise, we're always going to have a wider and wider gap between the lowest paid and the highest paid.
Yeah.
I couldn't support that. I just feel that it's the American system. It's been that way since day one, and it works. If I'm performing at a high level and my responsibilities are greater, and as the example was given, work x number of years versus a person just coming in from wherever you're staying, without the experience, that person should not be given the same amount of raise as a person who's been here for 20 years and has the credentials and responsibilities to go along with that. I think I understand what you're trying to get at, but I'm not sure that's the solution. I would, I would explore it, talk about it. But I think the American system rewards those who are doing the better job with the most responsibility and education. It's a motivation factor for that person to go and do what they need to do to go to the next level, to get that higher raise.
So, and yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we're deviating into an ideologies conversation rather than a strictly numbers conversation. I think that's what this needs to be. I, I, I want to hear more about what you're proposing. I'd like to see what that looks like because I haven't heard what it sounds like in numbers. If staff has something to show to us to kind of put into numerical value what you're proposing, I'd like to see it so that can make more sense to me because right now, we're just going into a ideological conversation and that's not necessary. And I don't think it's going to get us anywhere in actuality. So if there's anything to back up what the mayor is proposing, I'd like to see it because I think there is merit to what he's proposing and there is possibly a way to do it if it makes sense numerically.
So Commissioner Katz and Vice Mayor, are you okay with this? Looking at the numbers based in the, for the HR department?
Yeah, that's what I said in terms of, this may not be the solution, but we can explore it.
All right, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Katz?
So I, just because I have a good deal of experience in recent years with wages and salaries and negotiations and all that and the impact, I don't, it isn't ideology, but the ideology, whether you support it or not, would be rooted in the numbers. And I just know from experience that there are consequences that would lead to negative outcomes. So I'll give you a kind of pound-for-pound example. The state legislature in Florida last year said, we want to pay, we want to raise the minimum teacher salary. So they said every lowest-paid employee who's a teacher in the state, if you're a first-year, second-year, third-year versus a 10, 20, 30-year teacher, lowest-paid teachers get, in Palm Beach County, which was a 15% raise, $47,500 is the minimum teacher salary now in the state of Florida. So an employee who worked for one or two years got a 15% raise from their starting salary to get to that $47,500. The lowest-paid teachers got a large raise. What happened was that teachers who were over 10 years of experience got a 1.7% raise in that calculation, which means that new employees were making as much as 10- and 12-year employees. If I'm not in the classroom right now because of my position at the union, but my base salary at the district right now, after 13 years of experience, is $49,500. A teacher hired tomorrow with no experience as a result of that massive raise for low-paid teachers makes $47,500. So my 13 years of experience as a result of an effort to increase the lowest salaries means that I make $2,000 more after 13 years than somebody fresh out of college with no experience. So that is a consequence that there's salary compression. I just, I know where this endeavor leads and I know I won't support it, so.
We already did that in the city. We raised everyone to a minimum $15, is that correct? So what was it before? What was the, what was the minimum wage before you raised everybody? Like what was?
I would have to ask Julie. I think we, Julie, are you on? John, can you unmute her? We had about 63 employees that were making less than $15 an hour. The budget impact was almost negligible. We, I always, I didn't realize, we still had people not making $15 an hour. We adjusted that very quickly. It was, I think, less than $100,000 impact to get them to that with slight adjustments above those pay grades. But we did that in this year's budget.
And hello, Julie, you're unmuted.
Good evening. This is Julie Oldberry, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Yes, the, we were about $8 an hour was our lowest-paid employee before we went to the 15.
Is that part-time, including part-time or full-time, Julie?
Yeah, those are part-time. And then the full-time, I'm sorry, I'm just pulling up the pay plan. Okay, and then our full-time, the lowest on the full-time was 1405.
Typically, your part-timers make less dollars per hour, but you know.
Correct.
And absolutely. And so that's kind of the, you know, I look forward to, you know, maybe having the discussion a little bit more with you, Commissioner Katz, when we get the numbers. But it's something that, you know, we just followed the American system. Well, with your experience, you should have looked for work elsewhere because you aren't getting the correct raises or it wasn't necessarily that aspect because you have 13 years' experience leading and educating the youth of this society. And so that's kind of where I want to make sure that we are building a pipeline for the future and getting the best quality applicants in the beginning and having them have that kind of living wages and encouraging because absolutely, we have numerous career paths in our utilities, our sanitation, police department, fire department that has that in place. So it's something where we are making sure that we have that same pipeline, that the people who are making the least do not always get the least amount of money because based upon your model, I'm sure the administrators and the principals were getting a much higher raises over those 13 years if it's the same percentage.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just to kind of also chime in here, you know, I think the, maybe perhaps the miss, where we're not kind of being on the same page is that Commissioner Katz is commenting on salaries and increases in salaries, whereas I think perhaps you and I, and I don't mean to speak for you, but at least the way I see it or the way I perceive what you're proposing is that it would be an increase percentage-wise for salaried individuals or for employees within the city, where it would be some type of tiered approach where a 3% raise, for example, would mean something completely different to a person making $15 an hour compared to somebody making $200,000 per year. It's a life, it's completely a life-altering difference for those two individuals. So I don't think I necessarily see it as we're trying to create a compression issue. I think it's more so creating an equity value where a person making $200-plus thousand a year doesn't necessarily need, in my opinion, a 3% raise, whereas a person making $38,000 a year, 3% raise could be significant for them and their families and allow them to enter into a nicer home or to drive a car that doesn't break down on them so that they can actually be reliable in getting to work on time. So that's kind of what I have in mind and that's what I'm hearing and thinking and what you're proposing. And that's what I'd like to see in terms of how that, those numbers and those, that initiative would work when I ask for those numerical numbers. That's what I'm looking for. So I'm not necessarily looking that we would be trying to create huge gaps financially in terms of how we're raising wages of individuals because I think we've already done that work of raising the minimum wage and raising the baseline salaries of individuals. I think it's just a matter of how we proceed forward when we're giving yearly salary increases or yearly bonus, or, I'm sorry, not bonus, but yearly percentage raise increases per year, how we're doing that and hopefully that we're creating it in an equitable fashion. So that's what I heard from your proposal. That's what I'd like to see when staff brings us back numbers, not necessarily an issue that would cause compression within our ranks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Lori?
So I don't know, based on our conversation yesterday, we talked about the, basically the simple math calculation of you take, you know, I'm not gonna start doing math in my head, I'm too tired. But, you know, $1 million in base salaries of, say, the HR department, you divide that by the 10 employees who are there, they all get the same. It's, I would say that's no longer probably called a raise. It's probably a bonus of some sort or. It's probably a, a bonus of some sort or adjustment. It's not really a, a raise that affects your hourly rate. But that, that is literally what you and I talked now, Commissioner Romulus, I think I'm hearing maybe something different on a tiered. I'm, I'm just a little confused on numbers.
There was miscommunication because I was, I was saying it more of that aspect of, you know, the numbers that I provided, you know, if you have three different tiers, one, two, or three, and you're each giving them the, the 10% raise, you know, it means that the, the person in the, making that three or, you know, 10, 20, 30, if they each get 10% a raise, that person who's making 30 is now making 33. The person making 20 is now 22, the person making 10 is now 11. I'm saying that the people in the future, you would go from 10 to 12, 20 to 22, and 30 to 32. So that it's an equal base raise for everyone in the department because it's on the same team.
But you realize mathematically over a period of time that lowest paid employee would literally catch up to the highest paid employee if, in a standard gap, not city manager to a, a rank and file $15 person. But if you make 15 an hour and I make 30 and you constantly get 3% raises and I constantly get 1% raises because I'm always going to be higher than you, compression is natural, so.
You're, you're correct. And at 2%, it's, it's going to take a long time for that to happen. And, you know, that's something that maybe you look at in the future, but it's, it's something that I'd like to see the numbers because I, I feel that we need to do what's best to create the pipeline of employees. And, you know, we can make adjustments to the director salary, the city manager can make adjustments to the director salaries a lot easier than the people below. And so we've had to deal with a lot of different adjustments and different salaries over the, our six years here. And so that's kind of my mentality is, is that let's see what, what it looks like if we treat the, the employees as equal raises as kind of what the, the city manager said, as a more of a, a bonus. Everyone gets the same bonus rather than just giving it based upon their current salary. But I, I think we, we talked enough about this. And we can, if you like, we can have a, a conversation when we see the numbers of what it looks like for the, a single department.
Just so I understand my homework, I'm going to provide the base salary, total salaries for non-union departments, which are, right?
Just, just do it for HR, because.
I mean, Julie did that, well, based on what you and I talked about, she has that. She can tell you tonight if that's what you want to do. But where she took the base salaries and then did the, the breakdown for equal distribution of, I think, a 2% or 3%. If you, you want her to do that now, but if not, we can bring it back at the next meeting. I just want to make sure I'm doing the right calculation.
How about this, Julie gives it to us in an email so that we can all look at it? And then if we have any questions, we can ask her.
Okay. Julie, do you understand the calculation?
I do.
Okay.
I can have that prepared, no problem, thank you.
All right, perfect. All right. Now we'll move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three minute presentations. Please raise your hand. Have we got someone at the podium?
Can, can you hear me okay through the mask?
Yes, we can.
Very good, thank you. Sixty seven, David Katz, sixty seven Midwood Lane, Our Fair City. It's quite apparent because of various media reports and email blasts that the commissioner from District Four is running for mayor in the upcoming March 22 city election. Because of this, he will have to resign from his current seat to run for mayor. If he resigns at the point in which, in, in, in time, when it, when he's legally required to, that will not leave adequate time for anyone who would like to file and seek the District Four seat. What will happen is that the four remaining members of the commission will appoint a replacement to serve out the remainder of the term, which will be for more than a year. Three of the four commissioners themselves will be term limited in March of 2022. They should not be able to choose the replacement. The voters in District Four should choose the replacement. The way to remedy the situation is for the current District Four Commissioner to resign tomorrow to, as to allow for enough time for those who are interested in seeking the District Four seat to file to run. If he doesn't, it'll be extremely obvious that a behind the scenes deal has been made as to who the replacement will be. Who better to choose District Four's Commissioner for the next year than the voters of District Four? Not a commission where three of the four will be out of office in March of 2022. You don't know where you're going unless you know where you came from. And the Commissioner of District Four came from an election in District Four, not an appointment. The voters of District Four deserve nothing less than an election in March of 2022, not an appointed Commissioner. If the current District Four Commissioner chooses not to resign tomorrow and be transparent and make the above board choice, and that should be reason enough for the voters of the city to reject his desire to be mayor. If the current District Four Commissioner chooses not to resign tomorrow to allow for an election in District Four this March, then it will show that he's part of the deal to allow the term limited members of the commission to usurp the rights of the voters of District Four. If that happens, and I'll bet anyone who hears this $1,000, that no matter what the situation, their choice will be Amy Kelly. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question to legal.
Yes.
So just to clarify, because I'm confused by some of the assertions there beyond the conspiracy theory, which I won't address, but if a Commissioner resigns effective an election day when the law requires them, the subsequently elected board would choose a replacement, correct?
If the subsequently elected board is in power at that particular time, that's correct.
So I guess what I'm saying is that the three term limit members of this board will not be on the board at such time that an appointment would take place, which will be after election day. So literally impossible, what was just stated.
Correct, because doesn't there need to be announcement for applications for appointments?
Sitting Commission at the time of the vacancy has to declare the position, the vacant seat open. So that's the start of that. And then after that, they have the authority to appoint somebody to fill that vacancy for the remainder of the term.
If they don't fill that vacancy.
After a stated period of time, and I would have to pull the charter provision to look at it. If the sitting Commission cannot agree on filling it, then there would be an election called. But when that occurred in the past, the supervisor of election, who controls elections, would not provide an election date.
Okay, so there, okay.
Second question. What does the charter say? Isn't the, is it a cutoff date of halfway through a term that would trigger a special election or an appointment? I don't know if I'm putting you on the spot to.
Commissioner, rather than put me on the spot because you want an exact answer and since this is just public audience, how about if I provide a memo to the commission outlining what the procedure is, if and when there's a vacancy? Right now, it's speculative, there's been no announcement of a resignation.
Thank you, I, I definitely would appreciate that since some grand accusations of collusion involving four members of this elected body were just lodged basically and belligerently. Thank you.
Bishop Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, current candidate for mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Clerk, my brother, and what's going on, and the rest of everyone in the audience. I really want to commend Feeding South Florida, they've done a great thing through this pandemic. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Hay for being there. But it's every Thursday, I think I see you, but at any rate. We also been feeding, man, throughout this last pandemic and this increase here over, born strong in Bernard Wright Ministries. We now have a kitchen there with Cherry Hill Mini Market. We want to thank Feeding South Florida definitely, and there's a harvest feeder too that brings food over there, having called me and we haven't acquired, Dave Born Strong having acquired that kitchen. We'd appreciate if you'll come over there on the Cherry Hill in the Hill section, Commissioner Hay, and join us and support us. And if anybody here can contribute to helping us, we've been feeding at least 50 a day. I've been volunteering to drive the food out. We have people that cooks it and we've been doing that throughout last year and right now still doing it. And that's every day, five days a week. So we've been like, we're in the thousands of eating senior citizens meals every day. So whatever financial contribution or any voluntary, you understand, energy we can get and that respect over there, I appreciate you. And I want to say another thing about gun violence. We've been doing a gun violence, I've been spearheading it every month. So happened we had these double murders and we had these shorners fall right at the date we had set for the last gun violence march. I want to invite any of you all to come because we need to try to curb this. And we can, and we can get the people and especially get you all involved. And when we do have a murder over there by gun violence, definitely be appreciative. Someone from the dials, if you all would reach out to the family members. You all can come through me, I'm gonna get the phone number for you. And that's a great thing, I think that's really your position and requirement as our elected officials. As a current candidate, I want to do, because what we need in this city and to continue, all your effectiveness, effective leadership, I want to commend and appreciate. A lot going on in Boone right now, I don't know about. What I do know is we are a bit slight right here in District Two. And so, you know, we've been disenfranchised for decades. So we are asking that you all help us right now in feeding these folks if you can. We appreciate your step down there with us too, Commissioner Hay. And I want to thank everybody for everything they're doing right now because this is a time like none other we've ever seen. God bless y'all, y'all have a great day.
Mayor?
Yes.
I did just want to take a moment to thank Reverend Wright. I, I know he's been on the ground, on the ground and diligent, especially with the families who've been affected by the recent string of violence. So I do want to thank you, sir, for just your diligence and, and being that support to the community that really needs you at this moment, so thank you for that.
John, do you see anybody online with their hand raised?
Mayor Grant, I do not see any raised hands or any questions posted in the questions section either.
All right, thank you. You may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Is it possible to have somebody pass these out to the commission?
Andrew?
Thank you very much, my name is Philip Torano. I am forty seven eighty nine Dolphin Drive in Lake Worth, Florida. Don't let the address fool you. I've been a resident of Boynton Beach for very many years prior to moving to Lake Worth, which is pretty much on the borderline of Boynton Beach anyways. For many years, I had the honor and the privilege of being a coach at the East Boynton Beach Little League Fields. I also served on the Board of Directors for not only the district, but as well as the East Boynton Beach Little League during an impeccable time of 2002, when Boynton Beach was really put on the map with a lot of our youngsters in the youth sports, winning the World Series out of Boynton Beach Little League. For many years, my ambitions and my goals were always to get back to youth sports. Since my term at East Boynton Beach Little League, I have since become a sports agent in professional sports for the baseball industry. And over the course of the years, I've watched a lot of the youth sports community come out. East Boynton Beach Little League has had its up and downs with registration. But I feel like the community right now has really come together in these last, probably last year, obviously with the pandemic, boosting up registrations, wanting to get out of the community more and more. I heard you guys mention the Bulldogs and the Delray Rocks. Baseball needs that again, back here in Boynton Beach. We've had a lot of success over the years at East Boynton Beach Little League. And I feel like the community is getting more and more behind it. And my proposal currently right now is to fully fund a indoor facility out of East Boynton Beach Little League. And basically what that would entail is building an indoor facility behind Field Two, which faces Will Byatt Road, out of our own cost, out of my organization, by hopefully getting the city to stand behind this proposal, donate the land that is there, as well as be a partner within our organization as a profit share. So some of the things that I can bring because of my organization are some of the guys that actually played on that Little League team. Devin Travis happens to be a very good friend of mine. Sure, everybody knows who Devin Travis is. Former Toronto Blue Jay, former Detroit Tiger and now retired baseball athlete. He has nothing but love for this community and everything that has done for him over his career and is willing to come out again and give back to the youth of East Boynton Beach Little League by helping me with this project. Is it all right if I continue? Thank you. So I've got a lot of people that have really come strong to want to build up again the community from a baseball aspect and continue to keep bringing more registration, more individuals. This project would obviously be open to the entire community. It would be more for the speed and agility or recreational, for the Little League, for so on and so forth. And again, this project would be fully funded by my organization Primetime Sports Group. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I appreciate your time, thank you.
So I appreciate the, the information. You know, the, the way that I think this should be going through is that we have a Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Yes, sir.
That you should make a presentation to them with a little bit more information, like the numbers, the exact plat or area that you would like from the city, whether you want it to be simple or you're just saying you want a ground lease for so many years. Truly make a, a true proposal, so to speak, so that they can make, give us the, the recommendation at one of our city commission meetings and that way we can move forward. So today, you know, is our budget hearing, so it's kind of like, starting in October, we have no money in the budget.
Right.
To, to really help you, you know, fund this. But as you said earlier, you're trying to do this as, to do all your own funding for this. You're just kind of looking at the space to complement the Little League field that is already there.
Correct. Just to add, I actually have been in contact since March of this year with Mr. Casey Young and Frankie Lazzo with Park and Recreation. This is, seems to be in a project that they are enticed by, having obviously said yes or no to at this point, but have obviously been made aware. I've met with them on several occasions, not only via phone call, but as well as in person at the Little League park to show them the area of discretion.
So I think it's, you know, there's also a lot of land planning that goes involved to this when you're adding a facility to a facility already there regarding, you know, there's only so much parking. You know, you're, you're taking away drainage area, but I, I think the ball field has enough drainage area to begin with. But that's something that I, if the commission would agree that you, you make the, a true proposal and that you have kind of almost what you're requesting to the city in writing so that there's full recommendations and any conditions of approval that the, the Parks and Recs Board would put on that.
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say that I'm very intrigued by this proposal and I do look forward to seeing something more complete details. So if staff could reach out to make sure that he's aware what needs to be prepared in making that proposal, I think there's something worth looking at here. So thank you for coming forward and I hope the best for you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So, so dealing with the, what does it look, you know, on the, the city's property? What does our city code, land development regulations require in order to have that facility there? And I think that, and then have that proposal plus, you know, I think a better picture of the building to the, the Parks and Rec Board so that we know exactly what is, what they're recommending on.
Yes, sir, I, I've gotten as far with the Park and Recs all the way up to foundation, electricity, everything. This has basically been just kind of a recommendation on, on behalf of. This has basically been just kind of a recommendation on, on behalf of Frankie Lazo to come and meet with you guys and, and express my interest to continue to keep pushing for this project.
So to, to basically to, to start it off, you also have the ability to send a letter of intent to us with your exact parameters that you're requesting. And that way we can accept the letter of intent after the recommendation of the Parks and Recs Board, so that we can move forward as a partner with you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I lower my mask to speak or not?
Yes, you can take it off if you'd like.
I don't want to take it off. Ernest McNolly, Seven Ten Northeast Seven Street, Boynton Beach. I moved here permanently and bought the property in October of two thousand and twenty. Just as an example, this weekend, there, there are some little children that live in my building. It's a twenty-eight condo building. And there are people who live right there, who ignore all the fire codes and regulations, using propane, gasoline for their boats, et cetera. So again, the board and the association there and most of the members, they enjoy doing that stuff. And so I put in a call to the, for a fire marshal to come out and they sent someone and somehow they removed the propane. Then the next day I go to the fire department, I speak to the fire marshal and they said, you gotta be kidding me. They, they have that propane right next to the building, right next to the window where the kids are? It's not supposed to be within twenty-five feet of the building. Well, I said, how is it whenever you call and you request that? Nobody's willing to come out. They're out this weekend, out in the intercoastal. The association and their contractors, and they're putting pilings into the intercoastal. Which you need federal, state, county permits. They showed up with unmarked trucks. They, they showed up with unmarked workers. They jumped over our fences, damaging our fences. And they're working all day in the intercoastal, pulling pilings, putting pilings in. You could see all the pollution going out into the intercoastal. Right? So nobody says anything. So I make a call, come out and all of a sudden they realize, oh, guess what? They have no permits. They have no application. Well, you know what? But what I did, I said, you know, let me just check on this building. These people have been running it for forty years, okay? This is just one example of so many things that are done there without permits. It is mind boggling. It's mind boggling and it's continuing. And I don't like being in a situation because every time I see children or handicapped people endangered and I get involved with the police or with the city or whatever, next thing you know, they're sending me threatening emails, my neighbors, the board, et cetera. They're filing police reports against me. Why should I have to go through that, Mayor? Why me? I don't, I don't get it. And I, and I copy everybody on this board and a hundred times, I have never heard from one person, not one. And look what happened six twenty-four. Look what happened six twenty-four in Surfside. Now look what we're starting to find out. Aside from the condition of the building, how about the building inspector went in in two thousand and eighteen and showed up with the board and told everybody, I don't believe that engineering report. The buildings, it doesn't need eighteen million dollars worth of improvement. It's in great shape. After it collapsed, what did the building inspector do? Took a leave of absence, right? He took all his records with him. Nobody knows where he is. Now I, I follow that because everybody is. It's critical. Now we find out the mayor owns a building in, in, in Surfside. It's had violations for two years, broken elevators, leaking roofs, falling terraces. You, you start to think to yourself, and, and please don't misunderstand. I'm not, I'm not saying anything about this mayor or council, but you can understand what can happen in a community. And to me, that should serve as one of the greatest motivations to clean up everything. Both make sure residents aren't doing things that they're not supposed to, make sure officials are doing what they're supposed to do. Make sure the public has a view that you don't have to be, you know, all of a sudden afraid to go home because you're reporting all the dangerous things in your building. And that's how I feel now. And it's, and it's really not fair that I should go through this and and I don't get, I don't feel I get help with the Boynton Beach Police and I don't feel I get help with the fire department. And, and I don't feel I get help with the departments, but that's okay. I'm gonna do it anyway. You know why? There's handicapped people of which I'm one. There's old people who can't walk. And then without certificate of occupancies, they have little kids, they're babies. And all this dangerous stuff. And, and after six twenty-four, I said, you know what? I'm not just going to live here and see this and not get involved, but now I pay a consequence. And I will tell you another thing. In, in the state of Florida, you know, there's only two counties that have the forty-year certification, Dayton, Broward. We know that. We also know that you're trying very hard to get it passed in, in Palm Beach County. I know that. But in the meantime, when you see our building with the collapsing terraces, the foundation all rotted. And now with King Tide, all the salt water going under our foundation. And we can't even get an engineering report. But if you look at all the other counties that somehow the city helps the association get an engineering report, they're emergency closing a lot of buildings, they're condemning some buildings because the associations have a long history of not doing the right thing. And, and I'm going to say, I only know my association for a year, but let me tell you something. You know, it's speechless what they're doing wrong. And yet, and yet, they won't talk to you about anything. You can ask them for anything. Can I get a inspection report? No. Can I get a financial report? No. Can I get an engineering report? No. Can I get any violations? No. Would you give me any permits that you have or you don't have? No. How can they get away with it? That's my speech. I hope you didn't like it.
I appreciate Mr. McNola.
I appreciate you giving us the time.
Okay. No, I, I, I gave somebody, so I gotta give them all. But I, I did want to say is that, you know, the state of Florida has the different condo association laws. They do have different complaints that you can file with the, the state of Florida. Have you filed those complaints?
I'm, I'm, I just got over cancer. I'm handicapped. I have a terrible physical thing. I'm gonna be seventy-three. You know, this was for another time in my life. I'm trying to motivate you all to, to help those people over there.
Okay.
For me, for me, you know, look, I'll try, but I'm not as young and as healthy as I used to be.
All right. So I, I appreciate that information. Because what we're trying to do is what we're able to do. Is that, you know, if they're, according to the new Florida legislature, is that if somebody wants to report a code compliance violation, they have to put their name on it. Whereas, you know, if you're filing a police report, you can do that anonymously. I want to let, let me finish. So the, the fact that you have a board of directors, you know, that's almost like that fifth level of government because you got federal, state, county, city, and now you have a board of directors overseeing what's going on with the common elements. Because it's a business entity that oversees that, or, you know, your association. The, the fact is, is that, you know, it's a very tough thing when all the same people who are in office continue to stay in office and not necessarily have fair and clear elections. And so I appreciate you telling us this, but there's, there's little that we can do as the, the deist besides having our building inspectors go, having our fire inspectors go, and having our community standards people go. Because if there's no actual crime that is happening, the, the police aren't going to report it. And it's, it gets to the point where if somebody's trying to sell their house and they hear about what you're dealing with, they're most likely going to start cleaning this up because nobody's going to want to buy into that community if they know that it has unfair dealings or, you know, people not getting permits on the intercoastal. So I appreciate you coming here and letting the, putting this on the record of your concerns. And it's something that we can make sure that we keep an eye on. And that, we, we appreciate you telling us this. However, there's, there's only so much that we can do as a city where you may need to report this to the county, to the state as well.
I like to go on the record with saying, the last three minutes of your, what you said, I don't agree with at all.
Okay.
And, and so that we can have a difference then, right? But in the meantime, when I see kids endangered, I'm still going to try and help.
All right.
If you don't care that there's propane near kids and you say there's nothing you can do about it, and that's not a crime, that's okay with me. That's your opinion, not mine.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to follow? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to administrative. So we have a new advisory board, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We have three applicants. The first is Dr. Stephanie Hayden Adiemo, Advocate for Low Income Persons, which is
Mayor.
Yeah.
Before we proceed, could, could I ask staff to just explain, for the sake of the public, tell us about this board. What is it for? What do they hope to accomplish? What kind of responsibilities does it entail? I just want to make sure that the public is aware of what this is about.
I'm gonna have RJ come up. He's working with it on the daily.
Mayor Vice, Mayor Vice Mayor and Commission, this is RJ Ramirez. I'm the Community Improvement Manager. In the AHA committee or the Advisory Housing Affordable, I'm sorry. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is part of the CHIP program. Is the CHIP program is funds that are allocated from the state of Florida to different counties and municipality. And this advisory board used to be that he met every time that the city received three hundred and fifty thousand dollar or more. But because of changes in legislature last year, now this advisory board will meet on a yearly basis. This advisory board is composed of eleven members. And these eleven members review eleven incentives that come from the state housing finance corporation from the state of Florida. And the duties of this advisory board is to review those incentives with the purpose of providing or revising the laws, regulations that are in place within the city to be able to help the way for affordable housing in the community. So this advisory board will meet at least three times during the year to review these eleven incentives and prepare a report that he goes back to the state and also present it to the commission on about March. And it is part of the Florida statue. I don't know if I can answer your question.
It did. Thank you for that, Mr. Ramirez. In, in that HUD language, was there any further details on any criteria for these volunteers to be a member of the advisory board? And clearly we see here from our document that there are different categories from which they represent. But is there anything more than that, these categories?
Absolutely. No, other than these citizens that will participate as a member of this AHA committee, they can be from anywhere, from South Florida. They don't have to be citizens of the Boynton Beach. And they have to have, to have some sort of experience as they are going to be representing these different categories. For instance, a person that will represent as advocate for low income person will have to have some sort of experience working with people that are low income persons. A person that will be a citizen actually engage as a nonprofit provider or affordable house and will have to be involved on a field of the nature and so on and so forth.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the clarification.
Absolutely.
So we have a walk-on applicant. And so there are three applicants, Dr. Stephanie Hayden Adiemo, Kevin Fisher, and Sari Vatsky. And I'll let Commissioner Romulus begin for, we have two positions available for advocate for low income persons, applicants for advocate for low income persons.
One second, please.
Yes.
And I think Ms. Hayden, Dr. Hayden, I think also qualifies for essential worker because I think she's a teacher. So that might help, help there. Because she put that on her application, so it doesn't have, I think she listed both titles.
Right.
So essential services personnel?
Yes, and that would be Commissioner Pensurgis. So the reason why is I said, Commissioner Romulus, you have advocate for low
I know. I just was clarifying.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll appoint Sari Vatsky to the and that's my appointment for the low income, advocate for low income persons category.
Give me a second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Commissioner Pensurgis, we have an applicant for represents essential services personnel.
That's right. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Stephanie Hayden Adiemo as our representative of the essential services personnel on this committee.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Katz, we have someone who's requesting a serving on the local planning agency.
Nominate Kevin Fisher.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Excuse me. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Yes.
I just have a few more questions for Mr. Ramirez, since he's here. Since I'm on this board, am I only on this board until I am out of office? Is it as a role as my commissioner status or is it indefinitely?
That is an excellent question, Commissioner. Given the case that the requirement is for a elected official to be in the committee and you won't be elected official anymore, so therefore you will have to be replaced.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then you mentioned that it would be meeting on a quarterly basis?
The, the eleven incentives that are to be, take a look at, will take at least three meetings. And I am hoping that once we get at least eight members of the committee, this committee, which is the minimum required for the Florida statue, get those meetings going as soon as possible to get those incentives. And I'm hoping that that will take place by November to latest because a report is due to the state by December thirty-first.
And then my last question, how many more vacancies do we have?
At this point, having feel the the citizen engaged as a real estate professional and the citizen that will represent as an advocate for low income person, the citizen that is engaged as a real estate professional and the citizen on the local planning agency and the elected official, we have six positions left.
For us to get to the eight minimum?
Three more to get to the eight minimum.
Okay, that makes more sense. Okay. We need eleven total, correct? Okay, we need 11 total, correct?
Exactly, but at least eight to, to be able to meet.
And what's your quorum status?
I will say six, I will say, that's, that's, that's what I say, but I have to double check on that too.
Okay, so you will say, or is it, is that the actual? Okay, I, I would like to know what your minimum.
Absolutely, definitely, but I know that we need eight at least to have the meet requirements, touch requirements.
Okay.
And I will get back to you on that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We do have an applicant for the Recreation Parks Advisory Board, Commissioner Katz. Rando Patterson.
Tuck it.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, moving up item 12B. Opposed Resolution 21-117, approved request of modification development order related to Riverwalk Plaza project file, MSMP 16-002 and subsequent amendments thereto. If the applicant would like to have a word or make a presentation?
Michael Weiner with the business address of Boca Raton, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As we all know, work began as far back as 2016 for the approval of the Riverwalk Residential Project. I'm sure you all know where that is at Wilbright and Federal. The project was part of a mixed use project owned through various entities of Isram Realty Holdings. One of the unique features of the project was the use of the city's progressive ordinance on mixed use parking that allowed the project to be configured without fields and fields of asphalt. The ordinance had a fail-safe method that if parking was congested, an additional parking facility would be built above the retail shops. I'm sure I'm refreshing your recollection for those of you who were on the board at that time. Approvals were given, documents were recorded, everything went into effect. Then of course came to the time for the construction of the 10-story building that you see going up now, the residential portion of the building. And a construction loan was obviously necessary. In order to obtain that loan, and we discussed it at previous meetings, it was important to the construction lender that it takes security only in the residential property because it didn't want to deal with the commercial property and its tenants and, and those elements. That also was proved. However, the construction lender has come back and, and if they talked to Shaw and they do not want the direct borrower, that is the owner of the residential property, to be liable for the construction of a parking garage which is not on their land, it's on the commercial land. To make their displeasure known with this, they have continued to talk to us about construction draws. They've cut back on the amount, they are looking to fund a contingent liability. That's made the swift completion of the project very, very difficult. The solution is to make another entity responsible for the, the parking garage. And it can only be an entity that is not the residential project itself. If the direct borrower is liable, that's what makes the bank complain. So Shaw took a look around, knowing that this was not something that he could do or back out of, or he wants to back out of. And he felt that the city would be comfortable if you could release the residential owner, but you would have a bigger entity, an entity that had more assets as the guarantor of building that parking garage over the commercial property if and when it was necessary. So that guarantee could be made by the parent company. The parent company owns both the residential property and the commercial property. It's the entity that sits at top. But for the bank's purposes, as long as they do not have to see the residential property as the first company liable for the parking garage, they're happy. They don't care who builds the parking garage, they just can't have this contingent liability under their mortgage on property that they don't own. So Shaw would like to come forward. I think that what you will find is you have a better guarantee than you ever had before in that you are going to have a company which has more assets than the company it's replacing and which will promise to get, to build this particular garage if and when it might be needed. Shaw, you want to come forward?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner. I think it's Mr. Weiner, I think basically you made it relatively clear. I'm gonna try and make it a little bit clearer. The entity that I'm proposing is from Realty Holdings LP is when you're drilling down to the beneficial owner, that is the beneficial owner of both of the properties, 100% of the retail and 99% of the residential. So basically the city is getting a much better guarantor than what it has right now. And at the same time, we get the resolved issue with a lender that's going on with us right now. The, the entity that I'm proposing to have is got maybe 10 times the, the net worth of the entity that you have today. So I think that it's, we're not walking away from anything, it's just a question of technicalities. And hopefully we can get that thing done for everybody's sake and going forward the way it should be going. As you can see that what's been done up until today, everything's been going fine and from what I know anyways. And we've only had, been complimented on it at this point in time. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, so my quick question is the entity, so currently it is Isram Riverwalk LLC that is on the construction loan?
Isram Riverwalk LLC is the, the, the entity that's in construction loan is, we, I think, Mr., we've separated those two parcels out. The entity that's in the construction loan is Isram, it's, I'm sorry, Riverwalk Residential LLC. It is not Isram Riverwalk LLC. Isram Riverwalk LLC owns the retail property today. Okay, it was separated out, what date was it separated out?
In March of this year.
March of this year, we separated those two entities.
And so we are getting the entity that owns both of those two LLCs?
Correct, both of them.
Which owns the, the property, so we are putting the guarantee on the property owner?
Correct, correct, ultimately, yes.
So I'm okay with that as long as we're guaranteeing, you know, the property owner is guaranteeing it, I'm fine with that.
The property owner as the ultimate owner?
Yep.
Correct, it is not title in the, in the property in, in that way, but it's the ultimate owner it is.
Yes, Commissioner Penserga.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, these major development projects are obviously of key importance in our city. And so, you know, when making decisions about this, I want to make sure I fully understand what is happening. And I, I would say that I partially understood what has been said, and so I want to flush out and make sure I fully understand. Mr. Weiner or Mr. Shaw, if you could reiterate again, what was the concern by the banks? If you could just make that clear for me in simple language, that's part one. And part two, I'd like to understand why is this an issue today and why was it not an issue before? What changed, in other words?
What occurred? So, so what occurred was getting a construction loan for a tower was a difficult proposition. We found somebody who would give us a construction loan. But in doing so, they said to us, look, we are construction lenders, all we want to do is build a tower. We want to build that residential property. We don't, if we foreclose, we do not want to get subordinations from your tenants, we don't want to have responsibilities. Now, look, even the word foreclosure here, you think to yourself, what? Well, this is what lenders do each and every time they underwrite a law, they can't help it, they're doomsday, that's it, that's what we have to do. So we went through the doomsday scenarios and they checked every box and they were happy, but they said, we do not want to deal with your tenants. So the land was separated in March and what happened was at that point they said, I'm happy. They weren't, I don't know, you know, there's a lot of documents in the record. I can't say that they keyed in on this, and maybe we should go back and wag our finger at the bank and say, you knew about this. So why are you giving us a headache now? Why are you embarrassing us by having to come back here again? But they have, and they've done it through, through a method that while I'm, while, while it upsets me, I, I, you know, it, it's not as if I can go in there and, and hit the table. So they've done it by saying, well, look, you know, you're going to get construction draws, but we have this contingent liability out there. And we have it on some land that's not ours. And so we're worried about this and, and if, and we're a regulated institution, bad things will happen to us if we don't do something about this. So maybe we aren't going to give you a construction loan or we're going to hold back a significant portion of it just in case this happens. The, the whole conversation is sort of silly because it can't happen unless the tower is built. But logic doesn't work when I have bank regulators. So they said, no, you go back, you have a good relationship, go back and talk to the city about this. We said, we're not going back to the city about this because we made a promise, you said, figure it out. Shaw said, look, I have a company that has not only owns Olive Riverside, not only owns the other company, but owns other assets. If that company guarantees it, I know I'm giving as good a promise, if not a better promise. And then the bank doesn't have to do anything with respect to setting things aside or looking at a contingent liability that's not on their property. And then we are done with them. That's how this story got started and I don't know if Shaw wants to add.
No, the, the only thing is that you have to understand that the, the continued liability really can only occur on the, on the, on the retail side because that's what's proposed. So right now the lender on the, on the residential side does not control that retail side any longer. So they say, well, then you take responsibility for it. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's relatively simple to understand why they want it, but it's, you know, it, it becomes a, a very, very minor issue when it comes to the guarantee side, on the contrary, the city is getting a better guarantee than I would have not have given originally.
Basically, the bank is withholding money that you're paying interest on.
Correct.
So that's an incentive for the, the lender. In addition, they're also withholding the construction draws which you're paying interest on.
Correct, partially correct.
So there is incentives for the lender to do this and they found a way. And so this is why we are here now, where it is a contingent, contingency that only applies until after the building is built.
Correct.
So it does not affect anything that has to do with the construction loan, but they said it does and because they have the money, they can save these.
Basically.
Mr. Rickman, I know that the, the city's put through you through a lot, so you have, yeah.
You need a motion?
Yes, we do need a motion.
I'm moved.
We have a motion?
Sure.
We've got a second, is there any further discussion? Is there anyone online that has their hand raised? I do not see any way, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you very much for your cooperation, appreciate it. I'm sure everybody will be fine with this.
Mr. Rickman, where, where, where are we in terms of ground opening, ribbon cutting?
Uh, we're, uh, right now, after this, I'll make a report back to the attorney on the closing side of the we should be middle of October, we're out of the ground already now, middle of October will be before the first floor. And we should have approximately 12 to 18 months completion.
Yes, it is, it's very nice.
It's, I've only gotten compliments up until now, so hopefully it'll continue that way.
It's very nice to see a crane in the city of Boynton Beach, it's been a while.
The second crane just went up today, as a matter of fact.
If, if anyone saw the parking complex across the street went for $3 million dollars more in less than 12 months.
Yes, I got you.
That this is going up. Because we, you know, and this is, I think, a base for the city which rightfully deserves it and, and, and that's exactly what we envisioned. I think that's gonna help quite a bit.
And yes, it gives it us a, a new dollar amount for our 115 North Federal property, the CRA's 115 North Federal property.
It goes, it goes all the way around. I was, I just ate today by Bond &amp; Smothers at 4:30 over there and he's talking about going early on the renewal, so I guess he must be happy, so.
Good.
Okay, all right, thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
Would you please just confirm that the maker and the second of the motion meant to approve proposed resolution R21?
Commissioner Romulus was the maker, Vice Mayor was the second.
And that was to approve the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we're gonna do, no, I'm sorry, I just dubbed over 5B. Consider rescheduling the November 16, 2021 City Commission meeting to Monday, November 15, 2021 due to the commission attending the National League of Cities City Summit.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda. I'd like to pull item 6B. That is it, so, proposed Resolution 21-107, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an assignment assumption and consent to the ground lease between the city of Boynton Beach and FHA FH Quantum LLC to allow for the assignment of the lease to 3301 Quantum Owner LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company, the new building owner. So my, my statement is, is that I looked up the, the contract and it was supposed to be prior to the, the new business owner. And when we ended up doing this, I did not know that there was a minor site plan modification that would take away a track of the, the pond to put up parking that was surrounded by the, not to say mangroves, but the, the freshwater plants that helped the, the wildlife in that lake. And so I was upset because our staff did not inform us of the minor site plan modification. They just informed us of the, the street parking over at Eco Park, which we knew we needed anyway. And so the, the fact is, is that there was a lot of environmental damage done for building all of these parking spaces, not necessarily to the city's land, but to the, the property owner's land that I was not aware of. And I was looking up at the language regarding the assignment, it says that we are to assign it, however, there is no clause that says we have to assign it.
Mayor, that's correct. Usually in Simon provisions, it does have a clause that says that the request can be made and the approval shall not be unreasonably withheld, but this particular provision is more stringent than that. And the city could withhold approval for any reason.
And so that's kind of where I'm not happy with the, the environmental damage that was done. And so, what we could request or require is a certain payment for the assignment, is that correct, Jim?
There's no provision in the agreement with respect to payment for assignment, so that's an open issue.
Okay. But Commissioner Penserga, you said you wanted to speak on this issue?
I do, I just don't understand the fundamentals of this request at all. If somebody could explain that to me, why is this even happening? Why is it happening now? What is it that you hope to accomplish by doing this that you otherwise could not accomplish? Focus on the basics first.
Commissioner, could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
And ask Andrew to provide some of the background that leads up to why the request is being made?
Let's do that.
A little bit of the history because the mayor made some comments about what was or was not approved. And I think it's important and a little bit more of the background before you get to the current position, which is why.
Okay, so let's, let's do that, do the background.
Sure, so back in 2019, or not 2019, 2018, actually it was 2019, the, the city received a request working through the Business Development Board to relocate a business into the city. As part of that incentive and development process, we worked with the applicant or the, the current owners to work some deals to get them expand their parking. In order to make that facility work with this new business that was bringing in all $65,000 plus jobs into the city, it was decided to work with them to provide additional parking because they needed it to facilitate the, the center that was coming in, which was, as we all know now, NYU Langham or. During that process, we brought back two items to the commission. One was to transfer a portion of a track, which is the one. One was to transfer a portion of a track, which is the one the mayor was talking about, which is a small portion of the water management track that's adjacent to the parcel. And that was done to help construct some onsite parking adjacent to their property. All the environmental permitting, everything that was done for that was done within accordance. They also did, when they did the parking on the side, on the city side as well, we actually, they expanded the stormwater drainage to compensate for the, what they took away on the side that is next to the building that's there now. So fast forward to our current status. Josh, the representatives from the owners reached out to me. They have an interested buyer that would like to acquire their property, but in order for it to keep the tenants and the property, they need to assign their interest in the parking agreements that we have with the current buyer. So that brings us to today where the applicant or the assignee is, or the developer is asking us to assign it to their new buyer in order to facilitate a transaction on this particular parcel. That's kind of where we are today.
Who is this new buyer?
I'll let the owner.
The worst developers, we bought the building without, when the building was empty. We were the ones that brought NYU to the city. And then working with staff.
Before you proceed any further, could you introduce yourself?
Okay, my name is Joshua Schreger, and I'm with FH Quantum.
Okay.
I reside in Miami Beach, and we acquired this building in 2017. We, so we bought the building, the building was empty. City Boynton occupied space in the building for about two years. And then we brought NYU in, and they wanted to take the whole building. Their request was that they needed 700 parking spaces. The existing parking field of the building we bought was 400 parking spaces, so we needed a net increase of 300. Through talking to, I think this was, a lot of this was, the existing assistant city manager at the time suggested an idea, which was to relocate some of the stormwater. And that was in the footprint of the vegetation that the mayor, I guess, has some objections to. But that was, that was actually his idea.
Yeah.
And we, so we basically were provided with an idea. We turned around, looked to Kim Lee Horn, who we understood was the preferred engineer of the city. They said, okay, we can do this, and we did it. There were additional vegetation requirements that were required of us to put back into place to, I guess you call that mitigation for that. So I'm a little perplexed by your objections.
Yeah, I'm quite aware that we were shown just the property north of Quantum Boulevard.
Well, there were two, there were two, there were two resolutions.
Yeah, and so that was kind of it, is that we were told one thing.
By who?
By Colin Groff.
Okay, understood.
So, and so that was kind of my mistake, is that I did not see that it was the two tracks of land. I was always under the impression it was just the property to the north. So that's kind of where it's something that is upsetting to me because it was the staff's idea to move this water management area and make it a little bit smaller without finding another place for that water management.
Well, that, that's, I don't believe that's correct. There was, there was new water management on what's that road?
Minor.
Minor road that was, that was excavated to mitigate for that lost stormwater area, which is adjacent, which is where our parking lot was expanded to.
So is that the part of the Lake Webster?
So, yes, there was one transaction or one commission item that we first did, which was that water management tract.
Correct.
That the commission approved, which is the piece you're talking about, and you signed the deed on it.
Yep.
To sell it, or not to sell it to, like, I don't know what it was to, okay. So that area, as Andrew, you were explaining today, was, is not, was not an effective stormwater area, but basically a collector of trash and problems because it was not, it wasn't meant to be, or help me out here. It's not a filtration area.
It was a little canal.
It was deemed that we could get better stormwater by mitigating. If you ever watched Going Down Minor Road, all that pond being torn up and enlarged, that was the mitigation to allow for stormwater storage to take, to replace what was removed through the vegetation and, or whatever was in there. But, I mean, everything was done per permit, and everything was, it was approved by the commission when that transaction occurred. And then, then the second transaction was the parking lot on the preserved land of McGilliputty and allowing for additional parking there. So I just.
Mayor, I just would like to add, I think Lori's correct about that, but this did not come before the commission as one unified series of events. This was spaced out. The first item that Lori referred to was approved by the commission in September of 2017. And the second, excuse me, September the 17th. And the second item was presented to the commission on October the 15th. So there were two separate presentations, not concerning the same piece of property. First came the sale and purchase, and then came the ground lease.
Yeah, and that's kind of it, is that I'm looking at what was there before, and you see how there's all these, at that water tract area, there was all these plants that were around the canal that were collecting all the garbage, so to speak. And when you re-mitigated it, you just left a beach. And there was no plants or landscaping surrounding that pottery of water.
I think no additional trees were planted. It was just the pond enlarged, is that what the repair work or the mitigation work?
And so that's kind of, and so that's kind of where, you know, what I'm requesting as part of the requirement is that we in the city created a sustainability fund. And so I've not mentioned an amount, but we understand that you're developers, you're selling this for a profit, I would assume. And so I would like to request some money of that to be put into the sustainability fund to help plant new land, you know, water, trees, and landscape, and plants around the area that was dug up to be put for the water management area.
On Blount Road?
Off of Minor Road, yes.
We would be open to that, number one. Number two, just to answer your question, because I don't think I did answer your question.
Thank you for coming back to that, appreciate it.
Number one, the owner of the building, FH Quantum, has a lease obligation with New York University. That obligation requires, is to provide 700 parking spaces. So the owner of the building must be the lauror of the spaces which are in the Eco Park that affords the current building owner the right to use those parking spaces during business hours, Monday through Friday. I believe it's 90% of those spaces. And so what we're asking here, just to sort of boil it all down, what we're asking for is to transfer, as we transfer the building, you would assign the lease with us to the lease of the new building owner so that they can fulfill their obligations to NYU and their employees. The buyer is a company called Apex. They're a real estate investor, professional real estate investor based out of Philadelphia. Do you have any other questions?
Not right now, I just want to make sure I understand the basics before concerning with the details.
Okay.
You've drawn a good picture so far.
Okay, and then I guess my question for the mayor is, what is the mitigation fund contribution?
Yeah, you know, the number that came to my head was $10,000.
Okay.
And so I don't know if that's something that is appropriate for you?
I can speak on behalf of the current ownership, we would agree to that.
Okay, and so I'll ask the commission if that's something that they're willing to accept as part of the transfer, to agree to it, so.
Yeah, I would agree to that, but I would simply add, mayor, in the future, if we could create some type of policy around this, that way this is not a one-off or just a, every time a developer comes, we kind of spurred on them. I would prefer to behave in a way that we're not surprising developers in the future. So if there is a possibility to create some type of policy that would allow for, to kind of guide whenever we're doing any types of land deals or that cause any type of disruption, that there could be some type of mitigation fee or thing that goes into that.
I think it's, the main concern is the, you know, the water management tract. We really have to do an economic, an environmental study, more so than just a water management study when we're dealing with re-mitigating areas, so to speak.
Is that controlled by the South Florida Water Management? The whole quantum, all the stormwater?
Well, the city, we get permitting through the South Florida Water District. So yes, they would have accommodated if there was any mitigation required, that should have been part of the permits.
So that's, that's what I'm wondering, from a stewardship standpoint of environmental impact, would they be the ones that would be telling us, or whoever's going for the permit, that you need to do?
Correct.
Certain things, okay, so that helps. You have the district.
Mayor, before I state my final position, and Andrew, feel free to chime in if there has been updates. But one of the repeating concerns of the residents of that area is that with the expansion of the parking lot, there are lighting and car lights that would be directly in front of their windows. Have there been trees planted along that expanded area to block or mitigate any of that light pollution? Has that already been addressed?
I believe that as a part of their project, they had to install shrubs and stuff to block the actual.
And that's already been?
I believe so, yes.
Executed?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, in that case, well, mayor, I do support your suggestion. I support Commissioner Romulus as well regarding more a policy in place to make sure that this is not haphazard. But I want to make sure that if we add more trees, which we should absolutely do, but first we take care of the resident concerns, and then they can go ahead and place them in some other area.
Correct, and I think with the donation from FHA Quantum, we have those funds now to make the correct improvements for the environment.
All right.
But we'll get that money tomorrow.
That $10,000 directed to that specific area only, mayor? Is that the intent of the commission, that $10,000 is spent mitigating in that parking lot area?
Well.
Or do you want some of that in the fund?
What I would want to say is that it's, the majority of it is, but I don't know if we need, if we can spend all $10,000 in that area or not. So I don't want to say that it has to go there, but I would like to say that it should go there.
That we'll attempt to do what we feel is a good complete mitigation, whatever that looks like. And we'll let you know what, yeah, okay.
Yes, Commissioner Katz.
I just feel like it should either all be spent there, or if the dollar amount is higher than what's necessary to spend there, that we shouldn't be asking for it because it's directly related to mitigation on that site. And if there's a dollar figure, say it costs $7,000 to plant the trees and shrubs, that should be the number that we.
I mean, the other aspect of it is that this is the wildlife as well. You know, the ducks that go from one pond to another, the fish that are there that go between. It's kind of like, this is the aspect of having the sustainability fund that we help the urban canopy, and is FH Quantum okay with that as well?
With?
If with the fund, with the funds being used within the city limits.
We are fine with anything you do with that money.
I think in order to secure the parking transfer, which is the entire project, that they're willing to do anything because otherwise the deal falls apart because they can't, the new owners can't park the 700 parking spots. I just, pursuant to kind of what board member or Commissioner Romulus said, I think that since we don't have a policy and there was no predetermined process for this, at least for me, I'll just say that whatever dollars are given to this effort, I think should stay with the property. I'm sure that somebody who knows about trees.
Commissioner Katz, you're right, we'll make sure that it's spent within the Eco Park area.
That has my full support.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that that could be a matter for the commission to discuss and evaluate with the administration later. As I understood the speaker, the speaker doesn't care with respect to what the $10,000 goes to. And to go back to your original comment, it's really a fee for the assignment or consenting to the assignment. And then with that money in your general fund, you could decide how to spend it.
Going into the sustainability fund, correct? Yeah, it's not going into the general.
All right, so may I have a motion to approve as amended?
I'm moved.
I got a first by Commissioner Romulus, a second by Commissioner Katz. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you for what you did toward the city.
Thank, I want to thank the city of Boynton. We could never have made this transaction without your support. And that's to the commission and to the staff. Thank you very much.
Josh, is NYU fully in the whole building now? Were they able, I remember, I was going to, that's a hundred.
NYU is in 75% of the building right now. ACG has a lease until May of 2022, so that's, I guess, eight months. And then we will, then we will complete the remaining quadrant across the hall from where the city was, and then they'll be in 100% of the building at that point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Before we move forward, I do have a brief question for staff. Andrew, this may be for you. Many meetings ago, we talked about those air raiders needing replacement in those water retention areas. Has that occurred already? What's the status on that?
My last conversation was that they were repaired, they were under warranty, two of them. They repaired them under warranty, and then the process of being reinstalled. So I don't have exact, I'd have to verify, but I can find out tomorrow.
Yes, please, just let us know when that will occur.
Sure.
Thank you. You need to inform the residents, obviously.
We hear from Charles.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Exactly.
But I hear from many others besides him as well.
Sure, he'll be happy to hear that there's more funds for the park.
Right.
Okay, so if there's nothing else to be pulled from consent agenda under $100,000, may I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over $100,000. I do want to make a disclosure, on August 30th, I attended the city's mobility study presentation. And I think it's a great aspect to use our development for mobility rather than build roads outside of the city. Motion approved, consent agenda over $100,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing, there is no items for public hearing. Moving on to city manager's report, update the city commission on the Boynton Beach American Rescue Plan Act, Community Engagement Plan by John Dergan. Are you online? John?
I see John Dergan, and whoops. He is self muted. John Dergan, if you could unmute your microphone.
David, you want to send him a text? David, you want to send him a text?
I'm taking a standing break.
If not, David or I could take you through this. It's a it's a quick presentation. Would you like us to do that, Mayor? Keep going. I can tag team with you. Yeah, if you go to the second slide, John. I have it.
There he is.
John's here.
Computers are great when they work.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. John Dergan, Economic Development Manager. Tonight, I will be presenting the city's American Rescue Plan Community Engagement Plan. Next slide, please.
Should we give John a second to catch his breath?
I'm good, I'm good. Could you go back to the previous slide, please? Thank you, I appreciate it. Just a brief background for the public who doesn't know about the American Rescue Plan. The act was a stimulus bill. It was designed to help the country deal with the economic impact and the public fallout of the COVID-19 pandemic. It was signed into law this past March. And included in that act was a $350 billion dedicated to states and local governments to deal with the with the to combat the negative impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. With the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the city was allocated just over $13.6 million. And that'll be sent to the city in two tranches or parts. The first was deposited this past May. Just over $6.8 million in the second will be deposited next May. These funds may be used to support the public health expenditures, to address the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, to aid those communities and populations that were hardest hit, such as the hospitality industry or someone who lost their job or was furloughed for an extended period of time. It can be used to replace lost revenue, lost public sector revenue. So if the city lost revenue during the pandemic, we're able to use those funds to replace that lost revenue. It can provide premium pay for essential workers. And last but certainly not least, it can be used to provide and pay for critical infrastructure such as water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. A critical part of this legislation, and it was directed by the federal government, was community engagement and public input to assess the the true needs of the community and to get direct input on how the city should utilize these funds. Next slide, please. So the first thing the city did was create a webpage on the city's website that can be found at www-boynton-beach.org/ARPA. On the webpage, you'll find information on the American Rescue Plan Act, list of completed and commission-approved projects, an FAQs page, contact information so you can contact the city if you have any questions or comments. In that email address and the contact information, we have a city email address, ARPA@BBFL.us. We have resources to provide additional information. We have links to the community surveys, which I will speak about momentarily, and those are all in English, Spanish, and Creole. And just to give the the public the updates on all the latest news and information on the city's efforts with the ARPA, you can go on the website here. Next slide, please. It's just a couple of pictures of what the actual webpage looks like. At the top, you'll have a brief description of the American Rescue Plan Act and in the city, in talking a little bit about the city's allocation. You'll see the link to the ARPA FAQs page and the contact information. And on the right, you'll see an example of a program that was already funded using the American Rescue Plan Act. Next slide, please. The second thing the city did was create a community survey to receive direct input from the public and assess and identify the greatest needs that still need to be met in our community. The survey again is available in English, Spanish, and in Creole. And we're working with our local nonprofits, churches, religious institutions to reach out to their congregations, to their clients, and to reach those hard-to-reach populations so they're able to help us in disseminating that survey to the public. We're also looking to reach out to our HOAs and talk with them to see if we're able to provide these links to the survey and the QR codes into their newsletters and emails to their tenants. We have hard copies at our city library. Library staff is there to assist and help residents fill out those surveys. And they're all, again, in English, Spanish, and Creole and hard copies there. You can turn those into the library staff there. We're also working on getting those hard copies over at our senior center and other recreation facilities throughout the city. Next slide, please. So the city is working on creating three public input meetings. We're gonna have two public input meetings for the larger general public. The first one is scheduled for September 30th at 6:00 PM right here in the commission chambers. And that'll be a hybrid meeting, virtual and in person. We're gonna have a second general public input meeting in October. We're still working on the date and location for that meeting. We have discussed with staff for a potential location of Fire Station 3. We do want to serve the residents who live out west of the city, so host one public input meeting east and one west in the city. We're also working on a public input meeting for our nonprofit organizations that will also be hosted here in the commission chambers. We're still working on a date and time. That'll also be hosted in October. There'll be virtual and in person as well. And that's going to be for our nonprofits to really get their input and feedback on our ARPA process. Next slide, please. Just some additional outreach. Well, we're gonna work to have some public service announcements on our radio in Spanish, Haitian and in Spanish radio stations. All the information on the city's ARPA efforts is in our city newsletters that our marketing and events department sends out. And it's all also on all of our social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, really posting the QR codes, the links to the surveys, just any news or information about our efforts with the ARPA. Those are on our social media platforms as well. And the goal of our community engagement plan and the goal of all this public input is to collect all this data, to consolidate it, to identify and track the needs of the community, really assess and identify trends that we see. What are those needs in the community? This will help staff prioritize those needs and help staff come up with projects to address those needs. Next slide, please. And here just some examples of our social media outreach here. And we're also working with the marketing and events department to create a flyer. The flyer will also have the QR codes so you're able to fill out that server survey mobily if you're out and about. It'll also have information on the public input meetings. And we're looking to place those those flyers throughout the city at our city parks, recreation facilities, even spoken with the mall of having the flyer available at the mall and other strategic locations throughout the city. Next slide, please. I will answer any questions you may have. I apologize again for being late.
No worries. I think that was a great presentation. And no, I'm very happy that we are reaching out to the public to to see what we can spend on to to fit their their needs. And, you know, I was on Channel 5 last night, and I think I'm gonna be on Channel 25 tonight discussing this, and hopefully we'll have more involvement that we can. And so what I would also request that we reach out to the the different public schools, the different schools in our city so that the principals put it out in their newsletters and the, I guess, the different organizations that are dealing with, that we deal with.
Yes. John, if you if you would also contact Pastor Richard Dames.
Yep.
He's the chair of the clergy. And I think that will be a good item to push through the churches.
Absolutely.
And he would be the first contact.
Yes, sir, will do.
And so I I received a question from Mark McGuire. It says, will there be any plans to provide ASL videos or interpreters for the members of the Boynton Beach community who preferred language is ASL instead of English or Spanish or other languages? Yes, I believe for the different.
Every input meeting, certainly.
The in-person and virtual hybrid meetings, we will have an ASL interpreter.
And I think upon request, would we not, if if somebody wanted to come in to maybe fill out the survey or or just need some information, we would make the accommodation and make an appointment and have Beth or somebody come in and.
Absolutely.
Interpret.
Yep.
It doesn't have to be just at the public meeting.
In addition, it's I received a question from Jessica T. White. Hi, hi, how can we join the ARPA newsletter as an agency? So we do have a two dates to be determined for the nonprofit agencies, but should they be contacting you, John?
How about she emails the ARPA page?
Yeah, she can she can email the city at ARPA@BBFL.us. And that goes directly to me, and I'll be willing to happy to accommodate that.
All right, so you we have a new email address?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's ARPA?
Yep, @BBFL.us.
Okay.
So we have a good listing of the nonprofits in the city through marketing and I think through BTRs. So we're gonna we're gonna start there and then get the word out, try to get as many there as we can.
Do we, so I know BTR season's up and coming. Do we collect email addresses for the BTRs?
I would imagine we do. There's Leica, there she is, hey, yes, I'm.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. My name's Salika Brown. I'm the Development Services Manager. Yes, we do take all applications electronically, so we do capture email addresses for all of our businesses.
And can they sign, wave in or wave out of our newsletter?
They cannot, but we provide that information to our economic development and marketing teams, and we can forward that to them. We don't have a specific button in the software that they can opt out of it because they automatically send it.
Okay, so it's so automatic opt-in and they would have to unsubscribe?
That's correct.
Wonderful.
And and then we're hoping, Mayor, that in November, early November, by the, we'll have all the input meetings and survey out there for several months, that we have some good information. And you'll see a future agenda item that we'd like to sit down for a couple hours with you guys and kind of talk about all of it in a workshop setting.
Okay.
And get some priorities and some numbers and some projects identified and.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you.
Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. Jessica White did ask two more questions.
Yeah. And she states that I would like to provide the sexual abuse prevention course through the ARPA program if possible, do the ongoing abuse during COVID. So we'll make sure that, you know, that is something that ARPA does cover. And so thank you, Jessica, for being here and making sure that we have this issue to solve.
And Mayor, just to also add in here as well, all the comments we get through emails on our survey, we have a lot of open-ended questions and comments that the public can input. We get correspondence through our social media accounts. All of that's taken and tracked on an Excel spreadsheet. And we'll be putting that together in a report so you can kind of see some trends and what are some of the the repeat asks of the public.
Okay, thank you. Onto item 9B, update on election polling places for the March 2022 election.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Crystal Gibson, City Clerk. So the commission requested that staff look into moving polling locations that are currently in schools to other locations throughout the city. And then looking in that at that, there are seven schools that are assigned in the city that make up nearly 30% of the city's total registered voters. Just looking more into it, per the Florida statute, schools, libraries, municipal parks and facilities, they do not have the option to decline to let the city use their facilities. However, if we were trying to move those polling, those precincts to other locations like privately owned facilities, churches, neighborhood, clubhouses, they have the ability to opt out and often do. So there are concerns that these places may not allow the use of their facilities if they're assigned to have more precincts than they're used to having. Just to note, the schools are accustomed to being polling locations used by the supervisor of elections for all of the county elections and have procedures already in place for separation and safety of voters and students. They're not mingled at all. I think a concern was about COVID. And SOE's office is prepared, which he comes and to our meeting on October 5th to talk about that in more detail if the commission would like. But given that there will be an increase in the amount of the election if we were to move those polling locations to an estimate of about $25,000, and the fact that historically, moving locations and consolidating precincts may have a decrease in voter participation among those that are affected. Staff does not recommend changing the polling locations from those that are already assigned by the county supervisor of elections. Welcome to entertaining questions or.
No.
For the direction.
Yes, Commissioner Katz.
So when when this came up initially, I kind of inquired as to the reason behind it. And, you know, I moved forward. If there was gonna be no issues with it, I didn't have a problem with it. But at the time, the reason I I inquired was because I know through the school district that they don't have any objection to using their facilities and that, as the clerk stated, they have, you know, a track record of doing it. So I just, I think with the potential disruption of relocating sites that people are used to, because schools are a great number of sites, and as I think was indicated, 30% of voters in the city would use school sites. I just, I think there's a great chance that there's confusion and people go to the wrong places. I'm very comfortable leaving it as is. The election's in March, so God willing, COVID will not be nearly as big a concern. But even if it still is, the schools are, they have no objection. Otherwise, they would have raised it, not just in the city of Boynton Beach, but throughout the county at their 200-odd facilities.
You know, it's taking a look at the numbers and correct, you know, for Freedom Shores, there's almost, what is that, 2,400? Citrus Cove has almost 2,000, but it looks like. Some of the other schools don't necessarily have, yes, Citrus Cove has almost 4,000. So that there are some schools that have a very high percentage. And like some of our other, you know, it's it's very interesting to see St. John's Missionary Baptist Church has a total of six people. Is that correct?
Sorry, you're looking at what?
I'm looking at the precinct list for District Boynton Beach.
So there are multiple precincts at St. John. One of those has over 2,300.
Right.
Right, and then there's one small sliver that has six in that particular precinct. So that's a total of still just over 2,300 voters.
But yeah, no, my. Where, so Congress has 1,500? Is there another one for that?
No, I don't see another one for Congress middle.
Yeah. And so like imagine Chancellor, is that only around under 1,000?
Right.
So yeah, it would have been nice if they were grouped together by place instead of precinct, you know, precinct so we could get a better looking at this. I'm looking at, where's, is Boynton Beach Community High School considered a polling location anymore?
Yes, on the first, top of the first page, precinct number 3172, 3176.
Okay. And so that's also under 1,500?
Right. Correct.
And so. I'd still like to move those. I understand that for. There, there's a big number of student, you know, current ones at Freedom Shore, Citrus Cove, which is more of a, but the fact of the small numbers for Boynton Beach High and Congress Middle School relatively and Cross Point are the ones that I would like to move to other locations. Oh, yeah.
Question. For what purpose?
So it's the same purpose as before, is so that we're not interrupting because the fact is, is that when we have the, the people going into these schools, it's going to disrupt their day. I haven't say that I haven't been into the, to either of those schools to see how they handle the polling locations, but I understand for Congress Middle School, their big intersection where all the kids are is right outside the front doors. So unless they have another location that's off site, that they don't go through the front doors for their polling location, it will definitely affect the students there. Whereas other schools may have a different, you know, I really haven't been into, I haven't been to Freedom Shores in a while, I've been to Citrus Cove. And I think with Boynton Beach High School, you are correct, they have the, their theater and so it's on a different location where the kids are not going to be. But I think specifically for the, the schools that I've been to, I know that it does affect them, even though they have plans in place, it's not the, the best outcome.
So have they complained, Mayor?
Well, I'm not going to say that they've complained, I'm just going to say that I heard that it wasn't the best day for the, the school.
Mayor.
Yes.
You know, I really would prefer something more concrete or direct from the schools. If, you know, if we were receiving complaints from administration, I would place a greater weight. But in my mind, the balance here is, as from the information we've been provided, that consolidation and closures of sites can reduce turnout and voter participation. Obviously, none of us want that, but if that's what's being weighed with inconveniences at the drive through line for an afternoon or whatever the situation may be, and we don't even have anything concrete or written complaints from these schools, I'm going to say that for now, you know, I can't support this because I do not want to decrease voter participation and it is not clear to me that there is actually an established issue.
So the funny thing is, is you would think a pandemic would decrease voter turnout, but it didn't and increased voter turnout. So the, the past, you know, aspect of voter turnout, I don't put a high level on that because how, you know, the, the fact is, is that we have mail in ballots that more people are using. So the, that, the, the argument that it's going to deter voter turnout, I don't believe in it as, as much weight as based upon historical. You know, what I can say is that this is only for the, our election, is that correct? So originally, we rely on the supervisor elections voter registration cards and everything and everything like that. And so there's no additional costs. As you mentioned to, so like the postage for mailing new voter registration cards, this is only for our election, for these fifteen thousand registered voters, is that correct?
Correct, if we were to move, then the cost for the voter registration cards, just for the postage, would be over sixteen thousand dollars.
And then it's the, that number, so it's almost twenty thousand dollars, twenty five thousand dollars total for the fifteen thousand registered voters just for this one election.
Correct.
And so if we do another election in the city based upon this, do we have to print them out new voter registration cards?
Yes, sir.
Because is the supervisor of elections going to give them another one in between March and November?
Yes, we would just be moving it for our election because they're going to continue to use the schools. And then if we will want to change it again, then we would pay it again and they would change it back to the schools.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I wish we had known that since the beginning, we wouldn't have sent you on this errand as staff in terms of understanding that the SOE will not change, even if we change just for our internal citywide election, they would still keep those locations for more public statewide elections, those schools that are currently being used right now, those schools would still be used again in August and November of next year. So at, at that point, it's really, you know, that, that's, no. Yeah.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Katz.
And I'll note too, that the municipal election cycle and the non presidential primary year is the only election day that the schools don't shut down for students. So in August primaries, in November general elections and in March elections, where there is a presidential preference primary every four years or three years, whenever that occurs, students do not come to school that day to limit traffic in parent pickup line and buses and stuff. Teachers go, it's a, it's a workday, it's a teacher workday and professional development. So it would, it would literally just be for our March election and then it would go back to everything else for every other election.
That helps for, sorry to interrupt, that helps me because that was, again, you know, to kind of go back to the point, that was one of the main things I was concerned about in terms of exposing even more of our students to potential outside residents coming to vote. So if that is also the case, then again, I, I will let this go.
Okay, yes.
Going to say that I know we can, you know, do what we basically want to do here with our city, but shouldn't we, or have we got some input from the supervisor of elections office on this issue? As far as closing and.
So the, you know, the, there's a lot of numbers that we're, we're dealing with. And so it'll be interesting to see, you know, it's kind of like we got, you know, as part of the backup, the precinct list for District of Boynton Beach of all the different fifty thousand, fifty one thousand seventeen total registered voters and there's, I guess. Almost a little over three thousand inactive voters. And we, you know, we can look at this as kind of something that hopefully for future commissions to see what is the, the best model moving forward for the highest voter turnout, whether it's far fewer locations and everyone goes together or having them spread out on the original. Because, you know, if we're dealing with mostly mail in ballots and only twenty to twenty five percent of the people are actually going to these locations, it would make sense to limit the amount of locations. But well, I'll, I'm going to end this conversation because there's, there's a majority to not make any change.
Well, I don't think the decision could be made tonight. I think, I think as Commissioner Consor was saying, we need more historical data basically to help us out here, it's just not enough to, for me, I'll just say that for me.
So, you know, the, the question, I guess, then, Crystal, could you get the historical data for the twenty twenty general election of how many people voted in person versus mail in?
Yes, so. Just to. And for the March twenty twenty election, about seventeen hundred people voted early. And the vote by mail was about fifteen thousand people out of fifty thousand registered voters.
Which election?
The, the March twenty twenty, is that the election year?
Well, that was for the Democratic primary, I was, I was thinking more of the, the November general.
Okay.
So that we get, you know, not to say that everyone who voted for the, the presidential election is going to be voting for the mayor election or the commissioner election, but just to get a certain percentage of what people do, how the people vote and how many are actually showing up at the polls.
Mayor. I'm fine with that information just being sent to us via email, I don't think we need to continue to bring this item back up on the agenda. I think the point is clear.
I'll provide the information to everyone via email.
All right.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you. Next, we have nine C, Development Department staff will provide a brief update to the City Commission on Community Outreach Initiatives for Building Division Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, my name is Salika Brown. I'm the Development Services Manager. Some of my duties and responsibilities include oversight of the intake staff as well as the administrative facets of the building permit process, building tax and certificate of use and occupancy, as well as customer support services and other managerial functions that include intra departmental strategic planning, macro as well as micro planning, problem solving, organizing, which is always changing based on current demands. Next slide, please. The Development Department operates under the leadership of Mr. Adam Temple. Our department acts as the centralized hub for building permits, business tax, certificate of use, planning and zoning, community standards. We also administer plan review for engineering, public works, utilities and the fire department. Customer services are main objective and we're constantly striving to improve that amongst our customers. Just to give you some insight to our productivity levels, so I have some snippets of information from our August month last month. So we processed a total valuation of one hundred, I'm sorry, fifteen million, four hundred twenty six thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars in permit valuations. We processed a total of eight hundred and thirty eight applications for a permit review. We issued seven hundred and twenty three permits. We processed sixty business tax and certificate of use applications and we answered approximately four thousand, three hundred forty one phone calls, just to give you an idea of what our, our, our demands are. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, that's good. We conducted our first building in Boynton Workshop this morning. This workshop was conducted by city staff, which is also our service, subject matter experts. This meeting was hosted by Deborah Mazaicas and Michael Jerahan and we had about twenty or more participants this morning. Next slide, please. Some of the topics of this presentation included how to create a Sages Gov permit, a Sages Gov account, which is our electronic permit application platform, how to submit a permit application and also plan review corrections, which you would need to do after a plan review has been disapproved. Our leadership team is currently working on payment integration that will work seamlessly with our new software and we hope to see that into fruition very soon. We went over acceptable file types to upload into the platform as well as obtain insight about our processes and other helpful information from the public. We also facilitated FAQ engagement where we asked questions with the public. Next slide, please. In a joint effort with our marketing and events team, we use several modes of outreach to make contact with our targeted audience, which would include social media, newsletters, direct communication with our customers and of course, our website. Next slide, please. The purpose was to prepare our customers with the knowledge and skills necessary to ensure our systems are used effectively and adequately, inform our customers of any upcoming or current changes with laws and or procedural changes, facilitate dialogue with the public by having a conversation with the public to think through conditions and opportunities that will impact our, their experiences. We also provided this as an opportunity to be accessible to the public as well as facilitate and engage public input. We wish to empower the public by providing them the opportunity to give, give us their inputs so that we can use it for future decision making in our processes. Next slide, please. Some of our tools of engagement include surveys. Following the presentation this morning with the public, we sent out a survey just to receive feedback so that we can use that to formulate our new topics of discussion for future workshops. Also, building development videos that are also on our website and there are short snippets of how to do certain processes in our platform. We also are in the process of creating economic development videos with our economic development team and some of that information will include how to and the purposes for building permits, business tax, certificate of use and occupancy as well as plan review inspections and how to use our Sages Gov platform. Next slide, please. Our YouTube videos provides us the opportunity to see our viewership. So if you see the number in the bottom left corner, that provides us the opportunity to see how many people are viewing our, our videos. So to date, that is almost six hundred people watched that video over a process of about three or four months. Next slide. We also sent out a survey this eve, this afternoon, following our workshop, which allows us to receive input from our customers in order to formulate future topics and content for our future workshops. Next slide. These are some of our pillars of success. It quantifies what we do and what we, what our goals are as a result of conducting these workshops. We hope that we will receive feedback from our surveys, lower corrections submitted, improve customer service as well as more efficient plan reviews. This will in turn and hopefully increase customer service for both our internal and external customers. Next slide. Here's our staff that work so hard to service this community each day, providing permit applications, business tax, plan review as well as inspections and I'm available for any questions.
Salika, I want to thank you again for the, the presentation and all that you do to help make sure that Boynton Beach is a place for business. You know, we were looking at the, the revenues earlier today in the meeting and you guys are a big part of that as well. And so I'm very pleased to see all the hard work that you're doing. It really, you know, makes a big difference. And I guess my big question is, is, you know, what is going on with the, the home based businesses? What should, you know, we do because the new Florida legislature, because the Florida legislature created a new law that allows up to two people, is it? For home based businesses versus our original one base person?
Yes, we had already updated our home based business affidavit to be more business friendly in that aspect as well. I did a comparison with the Village of Wellington where they were also allowing that additional person. So it's two people in the house and one additional person that does not reside at the home.
Okay.
Mayor, if I will, excuse me, Adam Temple, Development Director. And we, the development, the Development Department will have a series of land development regulation updates that will be presented before you shortly, one of them being home based business. We're targeting the end of this, the end of this year when we have the sign code.
And that is a result of some of the legislation that changed to Adam, I think that's where they did a full analysis on many things affected the department, so we'll be bringing a laundry list of changes.
All right, and so we should be getting a new sign ordinance, Lynn?
I think we have that on the.
It'll be a future agenda item, probably on your next agenda, we're targeting November.
Okay, excellent, I appreciate that.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I may make a comment on a question, thank you so much for the presentation, number one. Number two, I think it was one of your initial slides where you had some statistics of how many were coming through and how many were getting processed and all of that. Does the new system keep track of how long these applications are in the system? So for example, I know, what's the average time from start to end? Is that something that's being tracked? I think that would be a very good metric because, you know, when we hear stories. I think that would be a very good metric, because you know, when we hear stories of my application took six months or whatever it is, you know, it's good for us to know, are these one-offs, or do we have a bigger problem here? It's kind of hard to know. Either way, it's good to have data to back up what our, what our situation is either way.
Commissioner, thank you for the question. So currently, we, we just recently launched our phase one, which was the end of May. Our phase two launch will be the end of this month, and a part of that is a, an advanced metrics and reporting structure that we'll have access to. I will be before you, the city commission, I believe, next month, and I will be reporting on some of the metrics.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last item for the city manager's report is authorize the use of ARPA funds up to sixty thousand to partner with Pathways to Prosperity and the Center for Health Promotions LLC to hold a vaccination event at the East Al Hester Center on Saturday, September 18th, 2021, connection with the Boynton Beach Bulldog football event.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Bush is still on the, the meeting for us, but I texted her, and I think Dr. Reynolds actually was going into surgery. He hung on as long as he could, so he's not on the, on the phone for us. But probably about three weeks ago, Kimberly Bush with Pathways to Prosperity had given me a call to see if, you know, talk about potential partnership of doing some, you know, start thinking about doing some vaccination events. She, the P2P organization is, has a partnership with Center for Health Promotions, and that is Dr. Dwight Reynolds, which is an initiative to get into primarily black communities, to educate them and inform them and try to get them to be more, you know, more comfortable, to feel safe getting vaccinated. Dr. Reynolds is a black physician, and he has made this a mission in his life to, you know, get out into the community and be able to say, talk to a community that he looks like them, and hopefully build some trust and, and relationship to provide education on the vaccination. So I'm talking to Ken, we said we would love to. We had actually chatted about trying to do something to get the county's mobile bus to the Bulldog games, because they draw three and four hundred people on a Saturday afternoon, as Vice Mayor mentioned earlier. And we were chatting about this Dr. Reynolds strike team. It's a team of twelve. He's the medical doctor. There's an RN and some PAs and people that they'll, they'll come up. They have all of the vaccines. They do the administration of the vaccines, the whole thing. So we've met with staff. We had police, fire, everybody, parks and rec, and had Dr. Reynolds come up, and Ken came over, and we toured, and we're thinking of doing it on Saturday, the 18th at, in the Hester Gym, which will provide a good amount of space for hopefully what might be a big crowd, only not just, not just the Bulldog attendees, but open to the, to the public. Part of the event would entail what we're recommending is utilizing ARPA funding to provide one hundred dollar gift cards to those that get vaccinated. Being that all three vaccines are available, if you come in and just get a J and J, which is not the popular vaccine in the black community, and this is open for everybody, but primarily targeted for that, that they, the Johnson Johnson's not the most popular. So we want to make the other vaccines available, and there would be a second follow-up shot and a second follow-up event on October 16. And, you know, we, we're seeking permission from the commission to, to do five hundred, one hundred dollar gift cards. We will use ARPA funds. It's fifty thousand dollars. P2P is going to be providing the staffing to assist with, you know, the registration along with the strike team. The, you know, our support on our end is, we have a postcard designed that we're ready to send out tomorrow if we get approval tonight, that has all of the information about the event. P2P has their network. We're going to just blast it out through all of our outlets and get these postcards distributed throughout the city as quickly as we can to get the word out, do some press releases and so forth. And we are, I think some of the other expenses I have in here, which is more of a guesstimate, but, you know, we're going to provide the water and Gatorade for those who get a shot. We're going to provide potentially some extra tables and chairs. We're paying to print the postcards. So I added ten thousand in there for the two events for, you know, miscellaneous expenses like that. But other than that, you know, our, our fire department will use, they, they may just have a unit that's already on duty to hang out over there in case somebody does have a reaction, but we have Dr. Reynolds, who is a medical doctor, to respond. But Chief Stables, he's here, he's been working closely with them to, you know, work out the event. And we really hope to attract people. The experience has been, and we've, I've just put some, a little memo, an email, and as well as a little spreadsheet in front of you that, with the research we're doing, the Biden administration encourages, you know, using gift cards and incentives to get people to get vaccinated. It's a, it's an actual statement directly out of the administration. It's, sounds like it's been quite effective. There are some cities that are doing much larger incentives, twenty-five thousand dollar raffles all over the place. You're allowed to use the ARPA money. We think a hundred dollars would be effective if you have a family of four come up that have not been vaccinated. That's four hundred dollars for that family, that that may move that needle of having some folks be vaccinated. And what Dr. Reynolds does as well is, he spends what time, you know, he can talking to someone, and I think trying to find out what would be the best vaccine for them and educating them. So there's that, that component is there, too. He's got a pretty efficient operation for what it sounds like in terms of getting someone in, getting the shot, being observed, and exiting, so you can process people. I wish he could be here tonight, but Ken, I know you're on, and I would just, if you think of anything I've missed to add, to add to this. And John, can you unmute Ken, Ken Bush?
Ken Bush, you have been unmuted, but you are also self-muted. There you go.
Okay, there I go. Laurie, I think you explained it all very well. You didn't leave anything out. Dr. Reynolds has been doing this with his strike team since the pandemic, since the vaccinations have been available, as a matter of fact. And he has been very effective down in the Miami and Broward area. I was excited when he talked about coming up to Boynton Beach and then actually being able to form a partnership with the city of Boynton Beach. It's really an opportunity for us to reach the community. You know, my heart is in the community. We know that it is in the black community, that a lot of our people are not getting this vaccination. And I think that we will, the hundred dollars for those that's just not dead set against it, they're not going to get it, but for those who are on the fence, I think it will encourage them. And the bottom line is that people are dying. We even have kids that are dying. So they have the Pfizer vaccine as well, where we can, you know, those that are twelve and over with parental permission will be able to get vaccinated as well. And as Laurie mentioned, all over the country, people are, you know, given incentives in order to get the turnout for the vaccine. And in Ohio, they had a record number of people the day after they did their million-dollar jackpot. Of course, we're not doing a million dollars. We're doing a hundred dollars, but I believe that it was, it's a start for us to be able to get this community vaccinated. So we're excited. P2P is all in. My staff will be there, the entire staff. We put our number on the flyer, so we'll field all the phone calls, and our marketing team worked with your marketing team to develop the, the flyer and even have a, a code on so they can register on the phone. Wherever they are, they can register and pre-register. So I really hope he gets behind this.
So we're looking at eight to six on Saturday, the 18th. Should the commission desire to do that and authorize the expenditure one of the gift cards, or we can certainly try it without the gift cards, but we think that might be a big.
So, Kim, I got a couple of questions. You know, I don't want people getting extra doses for the, the gift cards. So how do you prevent people who have already gotten the vaccine from getting that extra dollars?
That is a really good question, and we asked the same question. So we did find out that there, they will be run through the system, because there is a way for us to determine if individuals have already had the shot. So they will not be able to come back through. And that is, that would happen with Dr. Reynolds.
Number.
I don't know if the Department of Health requires that now. I said they do, then that's what, yes.
I mean, I don't know of another way that they do that, then.
I don't remember if I had, we had to do that or not when we got our shot. But nevertheless, Dr.
I think you need a social security number. Is that correct?
John Dorgan, Economic Development Manager. I know our fire department could look up who received a shot in Florida shots by your date of birth and first and last name.
Yeah.
That's how they, they look it up, so they can verify who's gotten a shot before and who hasn't.
Okay.
Form when you get a shot. I don't know if the social security number.
No, I don't recall that.
Never asked for.
For Florida shots, they will be doing, they, Dr. Reynolds' strike team will, they have the systems. They'll have iPads on site. They're encouraging pre-registration. The QR code is on the postcard. No appointment. PDs, we've got them ready to manage some traffic. They're, actually, I didn't think of that, including that as an expense, but yeah, we'll have PD helping us with traffic flow, because the Bulldogs will have the place pretty crowded. So we're reserving some spots for those that maybe drive by, see it. We're making some signs to say, hey, a hundred dollar gift card, you know, a hundred dollars to get a, whatever, things like that. So.
So I guess the only problem that I have is that why aren't we doing this throughout the city in districts one, three, and four as well?
We can. This is our first shot, huh? No pun intended, of, of trying to do this. And Dr. Reynolds has indicated, Kim, as you know, he's like, if we, we'll come up as many times as you want us to. So we can.
Those are his exact words.
All right. So that, that's kind of where, you know, I'd like to have it set up for the, the whole of the Boynton Beach and all the districts and central locations, that everybody who has not had that opportunity, that we go as close as possible to them.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, you know, doing the whole city, but you do know that the, the black areas are still a hotspot. And, and I'm thinking that's probably where they want to stop. But yeah, I have no problem with what you said. But as we roll this thing around our heads, I just wanted to, I'm all excited about it. I think it's, we have to do whatever we have to do to get people to, to take the shot, because some of the things that I'm hearing just really disturbs me. But, but sometimes you have to nudge people, and even a governor is, he's putting together a package for the nudge police officers to, to be hired. And so, you know, until you kind of walk in the shoes of some of the people, they have some strange reasons behind why they're not taking a shot. And maybe this will be enough to push those, some of those over the edge to get the shot, because to be quite honest with you, it affects all of us, because these are some of the people that we could meet at the mall, or ballgame, or wherever we go. And the more people we can get to have that shot, the better Boynton Beach is going to be. I'm, I'm all for it, because I'm tired of going to so many funerals. The other hat that I wear is that I'm an ordained minister. And I, I go to so many funerals where people have died, not only grownups, kids, because of this virus. And if there's anything that we can do to alleviate this, or to nudge people to get the virus, we need to do it. I feel that the ARP money is well spent, because this COVID-19 is what it's all about. Whatever we can do, let's do it. So I'll be there.
Commissioner Penn, sir. Good. I support this one hundred percent. Excellent idea. Obviously perfectly allowable use of the fund. Exactly what the administration has said. So other cities are doing it. It's working. Again, great idea. I commend Ms. Bush and Dr. Reynolds for working together. That idea of having an African-American doctor be the face of this program as part of this campaign, genius, right? Because that's something that the community will be able to relate more to, build that relationship and that trust, which for so long hasn't been there because of the historical events that have happened to the African-American community. So I'm ready to move forward. I don't need to go around in circles. I'm, I'm ready to go. Let's do this. And this is a pilot study, right? So let's see how this does, and then I'm open to expanding it to other parts of the city.
Exactly.
So you got your consensus.
Would you vote, Mayor? So for, on the actual expenditures, the allowance of up to sixty?
Thank you. We have a motion for item nineteen.
Second. We have a second twice. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business. Unfinished Business Resolution Number 21-113. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the CRA for use of the ARP funds for participation in public auction. In the backup data, there's thirty-nine Cherry Hill lots. So we're only allowed to spend it on thirty-five?
No, I, I think that's the number I had in my head. I know there's like the lot at Gateway and Seacrest that I don't think we're going to bid on.
Right. There's a total of.
There may be a few outliers, right?
It's, so I would want to make sure that it's amended for the.
It's the Cherry Hill lots.
Cherry Hill lots and leave the number out.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
All right. Saying no for the discussion. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 21-114. Approve and authorize a second addendum to the franchise agreement with FLSC LLC for textile recycling program and designate an allocation and use of funds policy for this contract.
Mayor, I, Mark Douglas, who was the representative for, for FLSC, wanted to be here tonight. He had a family emergency and ended up needing to take his wife to the emergency room, is what we've heard. So.
Okay.
He would otherwise be here, so I don't know if you were going to have questions for him or not.
So, yeah, no, I, I do have questions, because this is only for clothing and accessories. There's the other aspects that I was looking at, the SWA's sheet of appliances, toys, furnitures, and it's called, you know, the circular economy, that we are reusing things and finding new ways to recycle things. And so that's kind of where, to really get a better understanding if we want to put out an RFP to have more of recyclables or more of a vendor to help with this furniture, toys, and appliances, and other types of recyclable materials so that we are making the city as clean as possible. I don't know if there's another city that has already issued an RFP for that sort of aspect. But if the, our, the vendor's not here to, to answer any questions, I'd like to, to table it. And, you know, if, are we allowed to do a month-by-month basis, Jim?
Yep.
With agreement, you can, yes.
All right.
They're party to that agreement.
Huh? Say one more time.
They're a party to the agreement. So with their, with their agreement to do it, yes.
No. So it's like, we don't, we're still under contract until next, until when? Into the, the microphone's got it turned off. No worries. Test, test. No.
Hello? Okay. No, their agreement actually expired the beginning of August, so they are on month-to-month right now.
Okay. So I don't think there's any rush. Motion table?
Um, second.
All right. And then there is the, the second aspect of it, the allocation and use of funds policy for this contract. Did we want to have a discussion on that as well?
I'd rather just talk about it while we get there.
Okay. So I have a motion to, to table to next city commission meeting. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And moving on to new business. Resolution 21-115. Review selects an award and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement subject to city attorney approval with the awarded university for the purpose of updating the geographic boundaries of city commission voting districts in the city of Boynton Beach.
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Got to select someone. Who'd you select?
FAU was around 26,000 and change. FIU was, I think, 47 and change, 46. 27. I had that backwards, 27 and 46.
What FAU? All right. Yes. So I think the city did not make a recommendation.
The charter language, I think, specifically states that the commission will select. So we were advised not to make a recommendation. So.
Or there's a blank.
If, if FAU did our sense, our redistricting 10 years ago, they did it. Makes, makes sense. We reached out to a whole bunch of universities and realized none of them are really interested unless they're nearby. So they're our neighbors, right?
I think based on the cost, FAU is capable.
They did it before.
I mean.
So.
You know.
Almost a no brainer.
Well, I got tickets to the game on October 2nd. So I was hoping, you know, maybe we could do that, but we got to make a decision tonight.
I'll amend my motion to make it that it's that we are accepting FAU as the authorized awardee.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I do have a question for our attorney. For our upcoming election, is the redistricting applied to new commissioners seeking district one and three? If, if they qualify in November and then they are redistricted out of that district?
No. I'll have to check that. I think the answer is no, but I'll confirm that.
So it's, it's based upon the qualifying time.
That's correct.
Not necessarily when the redistricting. So if we redistrict before the qualifying time, it would have to be. But if we redistrict after the qualifying time, is under the current districts.
Qualifying is early now, right? Crystal wins our qualifying?
November.
I don't think we'll be finished redistricting.
Our qualifying is November 9th through November 23rd. It will not affect this March election.
The redistricting wouldn't? If boundaries changed and a candidate, okay.
Okay. And could we also request that they try to use straight lines rather than zigzag?
You will get options.
We will get options.
And they will be interviewing with you and you're going to get options and, yes.
Good.
The options, I think. And it has to be done again within 90 days from when the census is released, which we're hearing now, September 16th. So.
That'd be December.
Yeah. Close.
All right. 11B. Resolution 21-116. Prove the consolidation of the planning and zoning applications and incorporating a developer's agreement requirement.
Yes, it's me. So I, I think the memo that I provided as part of the backup should be self-explanatory. But I did want to point out that it does provide two options to the commission. One is to establish the development agreement criteria as a policy. And there is a resolution that would do that in the backup to expedite that part of it. But it also provides the option of the commission establishing that criteria by ordinance. So that, for lack of a better phrase, it's a little bit more etched in stone and not subject to deviation agreement by agreement. So that's not to say you couldn't do both. You could move forward with adopting the policy tonight and you could later return to etch it in stone by ordinance.
And so do we have a presentation?
I don't, I don't have a presentation, no.
So is. Major development application, minor and relief applications? So it's just the same application into one?
So basically, Mayor Adam Temple, Development Director. So basically, what planning staff has done is they've consolidated their 20 plus applications into three, these three applications, major, minor, and relief applications. And then under the major applications, there's a paragraph indicating entering into developers agreement option.
And so I guess the issue then is, is that major would be coming from the city commission, minor would not, and then relief also would not? Is that correct?
Right.
And so I'm going to give an example. Let's say the, the letter of intent that we received regarding the the East Boynton Beach Little League application to have a building there. That would probably be a major site plan modification. And so that would go through that, you know, would go through that application, correct?
Right.
Versus if they were just trying to redo the little concession stand, that would be a minor site plan modification.
Correct.
And you said there was 20 or so applications beforehand?
Yes, sir.
So like the cell phone, the cell tower was its own application and now it's merged into the major site plan modification.
Right. We've, we've simplified all of our, all of our applications, condensed them into the three.
Okay. And this should make it easier for people that say, hey, I want to do something with my land. The application can help guide them with the process.
Definitely. The consolidation of the, of the planning applications was for the benefit, for the benefit of the customer, streamline the process, consolidate them.
This way, you're not surprised with things at the very end that says, oh, you need to apply for this as well. All right. That makes a lot of sense. Can I have a motion to approve?
Mayor?
Yes.
Before moving forward, I just want to speak on this topic. I think this topic is actually more, it has more depth here than we might be seeing at first. So from my understanding of this item, there's actually two components. The first is the consolidation of the application process. Fantastic. From 20 to three and under those three categories. Beautiful. What I think, you know, that's a good, obviously a good thing. But number two, per the memo provided by Mr. Cheroff, you know, there were some excellent ideas there that I do think that need to be fleshed out and developed. And so they're related in that when you apply and you go through the process and you enter into these development agreements, the question is what kind of protections and provisions do we put in place into these development agreements to protect the interests of the city? And of course, the taxpayers. And so if you look through this memo, just really good ideas here that I'm seeing. And this is really what I was looking for several months ago. And, and so, you know, we see items like looking for evidence of financial capability. We want to make sure that when we partner with developers, they have the means to follow through and actually complete a project. There are sections here about reverter clauses, under what conditions do we revert and options to repurchase? So I, I do want to have that conversation with the commission, if that's something the commission would like, because there are great ideas here that do need to be fleshed out. For example, how long can they keep getting extensions, right? And under what conditions should they keep getting extensions? Just to, just to throw something out there. For example, here, again, it's just an example. It says here, you know, they can have 18 months upon entering into an agreement, upon expiration, and it can be extended for an additional 12 months. 18 plus 12, that's two and a, is that right? Two and a half years max? You know, I, I think that's, A, that's too long. If the developer is going to take that long, maybe they shouldn't apply or they should apply when they're actually ready. So I mean, I, again, if this is something the commission wants to, to flesh out, there's lots of great things that I think we could talk about. And one of the ideas that I want to throw out there that's not already in here is, you know, when we engage in complex, and I'm going to use the word that Mr. Cheroff suggested as well, unique real estate transactions, I think it's a good idea that we hire outside counsel who specializes in complex and unique real estate transactions. I think that's a good thing, right? If, if you have a heart problem, yes, you have a primary care doctor, but you can also get a cardiologist, a specialized, a specialist in that area to help you out. That's another good practice that we should probably have when we make development agreements. We should talk about what conditions can we terminate our options to repurchase? We want to make sure those conditions are stringent and reasonable. Well, in any case, again, I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, okay. Because I didn't know if that was for the applications.
So there's two parts, right? There's the consolidation of applications, making it fewer and easier and more straightforward.
Right.
But then the second portion is development agreement. What did you title it, Jim? You titled it development agreement. Things that should be in a development agreement. Forgot what you titled it. So again, reverter clauses, when do we revert, under what conditions?
I mean, that's, that's only when we own the land. This, this is more for private land ownership.
So my understanding is this is when we enter into development agreement. I thought that was my understanding.
Right. When a city is a party to the agreement.
Okay. So this is only when this, these three applications, only when the city's a party? Or this is for every type of development?
Now, when this is drafted for when the city is a party to, or we have skin in the game. So if we have skin in the game, we want something in return. That's what the conditions try to outline. Let me make a suggestion that follows up on the commissioner's thoughts that he's expressed here because there really are two parts of it. If you go to section two of the resolution, part one is the city commission accepts staff's recommendation regarding consolidation of the planning and zoning applications and establish minimum requirements for development agreements. I would suggest that you put a period after applications, delete the rest of that, delete and establish minimum requirements for development agreements. But then conclude the next sentence, the basic provisions to be included in a development agreement are set forth in my memorandum, copy which is attached to this resolution, which shall be returned to the commission in the form of an ordinance for discussion and adoption. So we're moving part of it forward tonight, which is the staff's recommendation regarding the consolidation of the application forms.
I'm in board with that, yes.
And then we return it to, to go into the details that the commissioner has discussed in the form of an ordinance, which gives you two opportunities to discuss that.
Okay. So I'm, I was, yeah, I didn't get this explained to me yesterday. So we're not just agreeing on the applications. We're agreeing onto the language of a developer's agreement as well if the city has skin in the game.
That's right.
Mayor?
But does that mean that the applications are different? Or there's only these three applications?
Only these three applications.
And then it's, the developer's agreement with the city is completely different than these three applications?
It goes hand in hand with the major application. When the, when the applicant is requesting something from the city. Land, money, approvals, so forth and so on.
Okay. All right. So this is when the, so can you, so for example, I guess that would be a good one with the East Boynton Beach League. They would have to have a set developer's agreement that the city has already in place.
Right. Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion?
A move.
Thank you. Do a second.
Just to clarify, we're simply moving the major, minor, and relief portions of this agenda item. And we are retaining the, what was discussed by Attorney Cheroff to the next meeting?
Yes, yes. You're returning that portion of it in the, to directly to be in the form of an ordinance at the next meeting?
Second.
Or whatever meeting you choose to do that.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I guess I, I'd like to, I get the presentation, what exactly where we were in that and then where we're going. And so, for example, what was our old developer agreement that we've had in the past versus what we're doing now?
We haven't not had one in the past. We've created.
We've had developer agreements in the past.
Well, we haven't had a forum, which was what I thought you were suggesting. We've had, we've had developers agreement as needed with the content as needed.
Right.
This would establish basic criteria.
Before that, if you can show us what was the before and where we are now.
Thank you, Mayor. If I just make one comment, I, I think that conversation, when, when it does come back, is absolutely crucial because this is essentially the conversation that I was looking for. So we don't repeat mistakes of J.C.A.M. We're going to be entering into other agreements into the future, right? This commission, the next commission. And we need to have these good practices in place. Maybe that's what you want to call it, good provisions. You want to have these things in place in much the same way that we have them in the CRA, like when we check for financial capability. And these kind of things should be generally universal. So I look forward to that conversation and this will be good for the city in the future.
I believe we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have requests to close door session.
Yes, Mayor. Pursuant to Florida Statute 286.0118, requesting a closed door session in the Ronald Ryan versus City of Boynton Beach case. Need about 45 minutes of your time, hopefully just before the next commission meeting.
The 21st at five, at 4:30?
Yes, sir. That would be good. We are on a trial docket in October and November and need some advice from the commission in conjunction with that.
And we moved up item 12B. And I believe that's future agenda. Anything on future agenda? Seeing none. John, do you mind providing us with the closing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Grant. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the City of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the City of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's City of Boynton Beach meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Good night. Good night.